Point my name, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, minutes from September 3rd. I just gave Candy a correction. It's just the date was wrong on the informational page that I said.
Yeah, another one. On the last page, it should say policy instead of police. She said policy instead of, it should say policy instead of police.
Oh, okay.
On the last page, but very little, up at the very top.
Okay. Okay. Um, I will make a motion to approve the September 3rd minutes with those minor adjustments. Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're on to public comments. Um, I can't specifically limit what people are gonna talk about, but if you're gonna talk, if you're here for the stage room property, there will be an open forum for that at that point, if you wanna talk then. If you wanna talk about it now, you, I can't stop you. Regular public comments are open. Okay. No public comments, and then there will not be more discussion or very public comments. Facilities update.
Good evening.
Hi Chris.
We got our new proposal for our change order from Dirt Dynamics, the one that I passed out to you. Price is over the original eighty-five hundred dollar allowance that was granted last week. So, what needs to decide our next step?
So, what does this include? Because again, these, these estimates that we're receiving will show the scope of work. So, that's what we keep running into. There's no scope of work on these estimates. Just says labor and equipment, to do what?
Labor and equipment for the jackhammering.
So this replaces the last one?
The four thousand dollar one?
Chris, do you want me to read the cost breakdown that you sent?
Um, yeah, sure.
Okay. So, um, Chris had sent me a cost breakdown on, yesterday of the tools on here. So, labor for concrete was seventeen eighty. Ten yards of concrete delivered at one ninety-three per yard is nineteen thirteen. Bracing supplies, two twenty-one. Total cost for concrete backfill altogether would be thirty-nine fourteen, so those added up. This cost covers the labor to prepare the holes to be backfilled with concrete around the bases, setting the bases and bracing them to hold the plumb and level while concrete cures, uh, and then returning to strip the bracing and begin backfill. If it is decided to eliminate concrete backfill, the cost for the original change order plus the change of two hole locations would be added, which would be fourteen oh seven point eighty for the first change order of forty-eight fifteen point forty, bringing the total to six, six thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and forty cents if the concrete backfill is taken out. And that would just count for the change in the two holes.
Fourteen hundred dollars to take two holes.
That's his price. Um, wait, no, hold on. I guess we, I'm reading it as if you eliminate the concrete backfill. Right, and the change order plus the two new locations is fourteen oh seven.
The prior change order plus fourteen?
No, we're not going with any.
He said the total, bringing the total to six thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and forty cents. Is what his email was for the cost breakdown.
Right, so basically.
These estimates had a scope of work on them, and we wouldn't have to have this back and forth. Been asking for that since the beginning, since the original. Then we got a change order that didn't include it, now we've got this second change order, it still doesn't include it. It's all based on kind of a conversation. And the price just keeps going up.
Did he give an indication of why the two holes would cost more when they hadn't dug the two that were there prior?
They've already dug the two. There's, one hole is in perfect condition, the other one has ledge.
Okay, so it was one, it was one hole they'd have to redig?
Two holes, we changed two locations.
Right, but the one wasn't dug when we went around.
Correct, right, it needed to be chipped.
So then, they're charging fourteen hundred dollars to redig one hole, essentially.
Two holes.
Two holes plus chip one hole.
Well, it's.
Potentially chip more, we don't know until we excavate.
Oh, okay, so the two holes aren't dug?
No, they're not, nope, because he, his original change order, he didn't wanna go by until he got approval for everything.
Cause it changed the scope of project.
Cause it came over.
So, so again, fourteen hundred dollars is to dig two holes.
And chip them, I'm assuming.
No, he said.
To dig two holes, yes.
That's unacceptable, that's way too much money.
Okay.
That's crazy. Um, and like, I, I got that price, a hundred and three dollars, a hundred and ninety-three a yard. They're marking that up. You know, like I said, I mean, when I called for the price, it was one fifty-five a yard. So, when I based it, I said one sixty a yard, that's, you know.
I'm talking about concrete?
Yeah.
I remember you saying one seventy-three, and he tried to, he tried to get call, call multiple times the next day, and he never got through. I told him to carry whatever number he got.
I thought when you did the math, it was like eighteen seventy-five.
Yeah.
Sounds pretty low.
Right.
Excellent.
So there are nineteen thirteen, that's pretty similar. But, but what about the additional, the labor? Does that make sense? Seventeen eighty for labor?
Well, if they have to do all the prep for it, and then put the, so he's got to put bases in them, he's got, he's got a plum and level, and then he's gotta let it cure, and then come back and strip the basing, or the bracing for it. So there is labor to it, it's not just dumping it in the hole and then, yeah.
So what needs to get braced? Because those ballards are gonna get put in the hole.
He's putting pawns in, must be putting pawns in.
For the ballards in the hole? Cause you, I thought about that after you said that last time. They're not gonna put the posts on the ballards and stand the entire thing.
No.
They're gonna put the ballards in, and then put, so what is there to brace?
Honestly, I don't feel safe putting a sixteen hundred pound ballard in the, in the dirt with no support and expecting it to stay plumb. I don't think that's gonna happen. That thing will topple one way or another before the concrete sets up, I believe, honestly. I think it's a great precaution to assure that it's plumb. For two hundred and twenty-one dollars, uh, yes, two hundred and twenty-one dollars, I think that's cheap insurance.
Well, it's not two twenty-one, it's all the labor too.
And the labor.
Guys, I think that those ballards could be backfilled to a certain extent.
We only have two feet.
Or.
We only have, from the bottom of the ballade, we can only go up two feet for the kind, we would have to cover the kind we would hold. We can't do that. We have two feet of area to cover.
That's the original. So I'm not, I'm not surprised it's around ten, that was my original gut feeling when we talked about last one, it's like around ten.
So we've.
I thought we thought it was gonna be eighty-five, that's why we approved eighty-five on the outside. Uh, that was.
I think the big thing we didn't consider too much though is the additional holes which he's charging us for two hundred per yard. That brings it up to ten.
It's very excessive, especially with, again, not including jackhammering. Which might happen, so this is gonna come back to us again.
Well, no, my schedule, I wanna perform, I wanna go to the contract and say, you need to excavate this hole before there's any, before you bring on a chipper. I, we need to know what's below, because if it's a nice clean hole, bonus. If it's not, you've, I've gotta have assurance that he can take care of everything in one day. That's what he's allowing for, chipping. One day, not eight hours, not nine hours. He said he will stay until the chipping is done.
Catch me up for a second, how many light posts did we start with, and did we add to it?
No.
No, we just moved.
No, we won't.
We just moved to.
The original locations were directly on the trees, also.
You would've had to cut off like half the tree.
Half the tree off to put them over.
So how many is there total?
Seven.
Uh, uh, we're just writing on the blank check every time that we give a, approve a change order.
What would you like to see?
Some pushback from you.
On what? I don't think any of his numbers are, I don't think any of his numbers are wrong.
Excessive for two holes.
Okay, well, that's fine, if you think so, I can go back to him, and I'd be glad to say, hey, I wanna break down of why you're charging fourteen oh seven for those two holes.
Just to dig them, it's not to chip them, just.
That's fine, I, I, like I said, I was, I stand behind his number, but as a board, if you guys feel we need more information, I will get more information. I can't push back on anything I don't.
I just want you to advocate for us instead of just for him.
If I felt there was a reason to advocate, I would advocate. But I don't think his ten thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars for a change order, with all we're asking him to do, is not wrong. I'm an advocate for this school, I've been here five years. I, I'm, I'm kinda upset that you actually came up and said that, honestly. I think my reputation with this school board, past school board members, is very good compared to what they've had in the past.
I would agree with that.
Personally, I take it as an attack.
It's not an attack, I think that there's, there's been a lot of oversight on this project already. And I think there's opportunity to have that conversation.
Sure, I will, I will ask him for why that number is, it is, why it is as it is. Anything else?
And that's the entire project, the entire, his entire quarter originally was seven thousand dollars. Do all that trenching in seven holes?
Yep, without backfilling.
With two holes.
Yep.
And it's fourteen hundred.
I will go back and find out. I will go back and find out.
Well, we, we added, we added three thousand, it ended up being three thousand additional dollars, plus eight hundred something. So, I think it ended up being, it actually was probably almost one thousand dollars.
But the three thousand was not really for the excavation, it was for the light.
Correct.
Those are all material.
Yeah.
Or so was the eight hundred.
So we had approved eighty-five hundred in addition for shipping and additional excavation and concrete.
And concrete work.
So, essentially what's happening, this is not, this ten thousand is not on top of the eighty-five hundred that we approved.
Well, it's.
No.
Instead of.
Right, so we need an additional.
So I believe it's thirteen hundred dollars over the eighty-five. It was one thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents over the eighty-five hundred, that was allowed at the last meeting.
And then if I'm hearing you right, this does not include any issues they would run into with digging those two new holes?
That is correct. Well.
Well, although he was considering that he had to chip one of them.
It does, basically, it covers the cost of excavating those two holes before we do any jackhammering, or as the jackhammering is being done. So we know that, okay, there's, we need to jackhammer these two holes.
That, I can't, I have a hard time seeing, coming back to ask for additional dollars after this, for.
I agree.
Yeah, cause it would only, it would only be one additional hole. Cause one of them's already included in the original.
Correct.
Right, the chipping, right, yeah, it's just the chipping.
But we shouldn't do any chipping unless we're excavating those two holes to make sure we're safe. And if anything needs to be done, it can be done that day.
So if anything additional needed to be chipped, there'd only be one additional hole?
Yes.
Cause one was already accounted for.
Yes.
And if neither one needs to get excavated?
There should be some.
I mean, needs to get chipped. Are we, are we gonna save anything on the?
I don't believe so.
Cause we're paying for a full day.
We're paying for a full day of a chip, with a chipper.
Yeah.
Oh, cause they'll have it here just in case they.
Right, it's not an hour leave, or a half a day, it was a full day.
Um, okay. I really do not wanna have another emergency meeting about this project. I will make a motion to approve an additional two thousand dollars for parking lot lights.
Your total, our, the new total will be twenty-five, eighteen thousand.
Above the eighty-five that we approved at the last meeting. So, total for change orders will be ten thousand five hundred.
Please save the ten thousand one thirty-seven that's on there.
I mean, we could make it specific to ten thousand one thirty-seven, I, if you wanna do that math.
No, I just, I don't think three hundred dollars is gonna get us anything.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably true.
But, and I, 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 as you, yeah. I, I only would say that because of the three hundred, you know, it's not gonna get us anything. So we potentially would have to come in anyways.
Correct.
So unless we're gonna approve like a much greater, which I don't think we should do. Let's say we just do that number, and tell them that's all in. No matter what happens, if that other hole needs to be chipped as well, that gets included.
I just don't want it to be misconstrued that we're approving ten thousand one hundred thirty-seven today, and we've already approved eighty-five hundred last week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that, but that was too complicated math to do in my head, so I forgot it. Though I think Chris did give us some.
It was eighty-five hundred exactly before?
Yep.
That's what we approved.
Okay, so that, that difference is one thousand six hundred thirty-seven twenty cents.
Okay, I will amend my motion to approve an additional one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, discussion?
I, I'd just like to make sure that, uh, Chris talks to them that that chipping is gonna be included. Uh, price, that there's gonna be no addition on this one.
We'll find that out.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay, other facilities updates?
I have to.
Okay. Great, thanks, Chris. Um, do you wanna do?
Actually, I'm sorry, can I add one more thing?
Yes, you're right.
If everything can go as planned, he plans on chipping this Saturday, if he can get the equipment, and the excavation will happen on this week, then we'll go to setting ballards and concrete. So, um, hopefully concrete Tuesday away, it's given next week. Everything follows in the plan. I'll keep Jessica and Kristen updated on your schedule.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Can I put the, um, thing out? I added it, I added one slide of our schedule.
I'm coming to the right.
There were none.
Don't.
How high, how high can you go? You want this?
Yeah, yeah, there's just one slide on the schedule.
Okay.
I mean, don't even really need this.
Kristen, if you try the one that's lit up, I think that's what I've seen back there.
Okay. So, um, thank you, I assume most of you are here about stage road property, so thank you so much for joining us. So the school district purchased, uh, the stage road property, which is slightly overstated by the acres, in July of two thousand one. The warrant article, um, says that it's to be utilized for a new school facility. Uh, that has not happened, and I don't know that it is going to happen in the near term. So, the school board has been discussing for a few years what we should do with the property. Um, we're starting the discussion a little early this year. We had thought about putting something on the warrant article last year, but we started the process much too late, and we, you know, couldn't sort of decide what direction we wanted to go in, and so we're opening the discussion to get lots of feedback from the town. Because what we're trying to figure out is, if we wanna put something on the warrant article for March, what will that be? The options that I sort of see are, we don't put anything on the warrant article, we just retain the property. We could conserve the property, we could sell the property at fair market value, or we could transfer the property to the town. Um, which could be for fair market value or under. So, we're, would love to hear from people about what they would like to see happen with the property. The school is limited in what we can actually do with the property. We purchased it to be utilized for a new school facility. So we could build a new school, and that is essentially it. We're also limited by RSA, the school board doesn't have the authority to make money on a, a property like this, so we couldn't lease it out to someone and make money for the school district, unfortunately. Um, so we, our decisions really are, do we keep it, do we get rid of it? And if we get rid of it, where does it go? So, that's all I have to say, does anyone on the board have anything to add?
No, it's good.
All right, so we'd love to open the public forum, um, for anyone who has thoughts. We did receive a lot of emails that I think I forwarded to all the board members.
You might would've mentioned what those were about.
Yeah, let me find some of those, if someone wants to come.
I think I printed them all out, so if you would like. Cause there were a lot.
Yes, okay. Um, so we have, should I say their names, or does it matter?
I don't think there's anything crowded in there.
Okay, so Robert and Colleen Creata would like to see the property conserved. They don't believe that there would be a huge impact to taxes, because, um, you know, if we sold it to a developer, it would really just be the property tax that we would collect on it, and they don't think that is substantial. And then, if we sold it and they developed houses, that could impact, uh, the number of students that we already have at our school. We did get a proposal from Craig Houston, who is the director of the Parks and Rec program. He would love to see the land be transferred to the town to be used for a, uh, Parks and Recreation facility, um, for the community. A multi-use community enrichment. Um, Savannah Logan would like to see the land be used for sports fields, or an indoor dome that we could be, that can be rented out. Um, a track, for a cross-country track, walking trails, um, soccer fields. Um, Cole Luterno would like to see it put in conservation. And those are the emails that we've gotten so far. So anyone is welcome to come up. Um, there are a few number of people, so I'm not gonna put a timeline on it, but if we give your special each other's time, that'd be great.
I have a clarifying question, it's like the person we want to write with the hand.
Sure.
So you said we can't make money, so we can't use it as an endeavor that you make money, but we can make money off the sale of it?
Sort, sort of.
Okay, that's.
So, sort of, I think there are several caveats to that. We can't, um, we could take the money, it has to be utilized for the taxpayers. So we could, let's say, put it in a trust fund for our building maintenance. So if we took the money, we, we can't take the money, I think, in, I don't know.
Just keep it in a budget.
Off the budget, right, yeah.
Could, in the spirit of what, the land was purchased to put a high school, which I'm in total agreement with everyone else who would, I think, we're never gonna need it up to this point, and I've been here twenty-five years and never seen a moment, uh, a lot of arguments against it, but, um, it was, it was bought originally, the whole purpose was to create a larger, a place where children are educated. So for me, selling it, taking the funds and using it for, replace those for, replace the, I don't know what I, the words, the.
Modular.
The modulars. Nothing like, I'm not, I'm not on board with what they proposed before, but something in the spirit of, put a structure we own, we're paying for those, this is what the money's for, that is almost the same purpose, we're just building it.
Right.
Here instead of there, so when we're making money off it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree, though I will say that I don't think the fair market value for the land will make much of a dent in, in addition project. It will make.
It'll make some dent, right, it may.
It's certainly not gonna pay for an addition.
It's not gonna pay for anything like I think they put before, not that I think it's gonna pay for really anything, but if we could be utilizing that for funds, I think it would soften the blow for taxpayers.
Right.
Right, we have this lump sum of money, we can put towards it. Possibly there would be, down the road, other funding streams, and we have, the school, the school is the size it is today because of different grants and whatnot. So that would, that's just my take, I would love, as somebody who is very, very close to that, I mean, and a taxpayer, I think like the Innen Deer Field is a fabulous addition to our community, so seeing something along the lines of that versus yet another subdivision, um, that, over fifty-five housing would be, I would think, so perfect. Um, because it's not adding kids, but it's adding space for people who live here to possibly move into as they age and keep doing what the community looks like right now. Thank you for having us, but.
Uh, did, I'm not sure if you said your name for the minutes.
Leela Thompson.
It still goes in us. Really, it's just Leela, like Sharon Madonna. I like that one too, that's funny, it's still graphic.
Great, thank you so much.
I, I have a clarifying, another clarifying question while we're doing that. In your list, you, um, you transferred the property to, to the town. You then, I think, suggested that it would be at a, at fair market value.
Or less.
Or, or less, and so I guess I'm, I'd be interested to know your thinking about that, given that the taxpayers have already paid.
Right.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this property. So, i- if it were to, I mean, clarifying, the transfer to the proper, to the town option would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't pretend to know what to do. I, I also don't know, I think that was the amount that was approved for the sale, I don't actually know how much we bought it for. Um, maybe it was three seventy-five, I don't know. Um, but yeah, I agree with you, I wouldn't wanna tax people twice.
Typically, when that transfer happens, it's usually like a dollar.
Right, cause it's already taxed.
Not a bad price.
Doesn't mean we have to do it that way, but that, that has been my experience, is that usually it's a transfer of a dollar.
I'm not making, I'm not making that promise right now. So it's gonna be good. But, yeah, I, if that, if the town, if people in town felt strongly that they wanted to transfer the town, I think that would be reasonable.
Other comments?
Greg Whitmore, North Road, unfortunately, I got a good amount to say. So you did invite the select board here, I don't in any way represent the select board, I'm just a guy on North Road talking right now. So, uh, let's see. We know that the residents of Deerfield want lower taxes, right? And I see this as a rather unique opportunity to make a pretty big dent in our taxes. So we have a 75-acre property that is ideally situated on an already busy road, right? Um, we already know that, I mean, we, we were thinking about putting a, a school in there, and obviously it fell apart, and just, uh, point of fact, the original price of that was 12,650,000, so, a lot cheaper back then, but, uh,
Oh, to build the high school.
Yeah, that's what the cost was, it was 1991, yeah, yeah. So, it, I can't stress enough how unique I think this is. Um, what I would like to see done, so, number one, I mean, we're just, you know, bleeding tax money, number one. Number two, we have a large property, we're obviously going to have multiple habitat types in there, some are going to be more valuable than others, um, you know, just as far as biodiversity is concerned, conservation is concerned, so, I don't know. Has there been a study done that has mapped this out?
No, not that, not that I've.
Conservation Commission, has this been known?
I've got a comment for me.
Okay. Um, I think that would be pretty useful to the town, um, because that would make, uh, it would obviously determine what aspects of this property could be used for what. So, I think ideally what I would like to see, uh, is for the number three, not to be sold. Uh, I mean, a one-time payment would be a drop in the bucket to, you know, the tax woes of Deerfield at this point. And wasn't it like 475 that was valued at recently?
Yeah, that's the most recent town assessment.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's not going to suit us at all.
Not much more than they paid for it, five years ago.
Yeah. So what, what I would like to see, um, is the transfer to the town, and then have a town-wide effort to then determine what could be done, because obviously, it sounds like the town has much more flexibility than the school, you know, because, um, we'd obviously have to get the legality of everything, but, uh, you know, then could we develop portions of it? Um, and we'd need to know, you know, we'd have to some, have someone come in, whoever the expert in the field is, and say, okay, you have ledge here, you don't have ledge here, you have wetland there, you don't have wetland there, and determine what could go where. So this is just the very, very beginning of a long conversation that needs a lot of research, a lot of mapping, and a lot of input from everybody in the town at this point, and ultimately, I see this going to obviously a Warren article, you know, we come up with, with a plan for it. Um, I would personally like to see, um, sort of, some sort of small development going there, some sort of, uh, you know, a business park or whatnot. I mean, 75 acres is a huge chunk of land to work with. Um, you know, I know that a big concern in town is, we don't want to take away from the rustic nature of Deerfield. I mean, when you have 75 acres, you can tuck it in there pretty good, and, you know, have it not even really noticeable from the road. And we could also leave a pretty substantial buffer to any abutters around the property, you know, because obviously, I wouldn't want, uh, uh, you know, this going in right next to me, but if we can leave enough space in between, um, so that's not really noticeable, while still tucking it off the main road, seems like that would be a, you know, a pretty good deal. People might say it might not generate a lot of tax revenue, and any tax revenue is better than no tax revenue, to say the least. And we're not getting anything off of this right now. Uh, another thing that ran through my mind is, this would be a good location, we're always talking about, we need more, uh, you know, senior housing, could we put a 55-plus community in here? Um, I would not like to see it divided into smaller lots, because that would bring in more kids, which would fill in an already, you know, school, full of kids. Um, but if we were bringing individuals without kids, seems like that would be a, you know, kind of a better, better, uh, better idea, especially since how we need that, that sort of housing in town, so. Uh, that's, you know, me personally, I would like number four, and, uh, I'd like to see a huge town con, you know, conversation going on this, where we come up with something that would benefit the town, get our taxes down, and, uh, make use of this property that's just been sitting there.
I have a question, Greg, what did you mean by, we're just bleeding tax money?
I mean, it's, so instead of us actually benefiting from this, you know, getting tax revenue from it, it's just sitting, we're not getting nearly the tax money we could be getting off it by actually utilizing it.
The school doesn't pay back just on it.
Right, that's what I mean, to get clear, we're not, we're not costing.
Great, it's not costing us anything.
It's not generating, yeah, it's not generating. How long, how, so we have this for what, like 20?
Nearly 25 years.
25 years of missed opportunity, basically, you know, so it's a bummer we couldn't put a school there, but, I mean, clearly we could do something with this, you know, I've, and I'm, generating tax revenue, generating local jobs, I mean, that's, that's a big deal. So, that's, I hope we can come together and do something useful with it.
Thank you.
Jared Messina, Raymond Road, uh, I also am sitting here as a private resident this evening. One thing I know is I actually have firsthand knowledge of this land, I own a budding property to it. The only way that the town, old school board and the municipal end of it, can guarantee that it won't come at a cost to the town with more tax,
Burden?
With more tax burden, is to leave it as it is. As it's sat for the past 20 years, it actually hasn't cost the town a dime. Uh, nobody's even made an effort to log it and do forestry management on it, which is a shame, but it hasn't cost us anything. We're all very well aware of the tax implications of houses, uh, the additional maintenance, the trash, the students, and very seldom do what we get in return, offset with the actual burdens. So, using it residentially probably won't work. Uh, the town is in no place to be in the real estate business or trying to manage land and property, so I feel like that's out. And I drive around and I look at all of the vacant commercial real estate in Northwood, Epping, Raymond, and I don't see a high demand for any kind of commercial frontage or real estate. I had some very lengthy conversations with some representatives out of Raymond over the past few days, and they're all basically guiding me to say, put it in conservation and cherish your wooded forests, because they've all drank the Kool-Aid, they've put in their 55 pluses, they've put in their, uh, workforce housing, they've put in their small commercial developments, and at the end of the day, there's no return. It actually just comes at a cost and a burden to the residents. There is also something that, I don't know if anybody remembers, but there's a very good possibility that in any event that that property isn't being used for a high school, the gentleman who sold it to the school board originally has first refusals to buy it back for what he paid. Uh, I'm not sure if anybody remembers that, but I've been told that by more than one person, and that would probably involve digging up 20-something-year-old paperwork, if not meeting minutes from when that transaction took place.
I mean, yeah, we're working on that. We have, we have not explored all of the legality.
I mean, I'm, I'm reading things where we're talking about, you know, people want to put in domes, and there's a lot of uh, grandiose ideas, but at the end of the day, I just watched a board have to struggle over a $1,400 change order. We are in no position to take on a project of any type of undertaking like that. So the only way the school board and the town can guarantee that that property won't cost the town long-term tax money is by leaving it as it lies. And, uh, personally, I don't care if the school retains it, I don't care if they transfer it to the town for a dollar and put it into a town forest, which would be wonderful, but, uh, I don't see how selling it or developing it would assist the town tax-wise in any way. And that's it.
Got it, thanks so much.
Can I ask a question, have, did the select board have a discussion about this, as of?
Nope. And I'm here as Jared Messina.
I know, you said that, I just wanted to know if, because there was a consensus.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, nothing has been discussed at the select board, don't hold.
Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts, ideas, suggestions? Janie?
I'm not ready to make any statement about a direction other than to support the process. And I'm really appreciative of you all opening this up to the community, so that the best, what's best for the town can be realized, because without that, again, we all have our own personal ideas. And I shouldn't stop.
You can.
Because I just said I wanted, I really benefit from hearing other ideas rather than just promoting what I think should happen. Just two general comments, there, and thanks for reading the emails, that's helpful to know, you know, what feedback that you've had from others as well. And I think there's a big difference between, uh, conserving a property because it has conservation values versus conserving the property because they don't want to go. Um, and so I think we, you know, creating a discussion points to, to help people, uh, sort that out and, and be honest and clear about what the priorities are. I think that's important to know, and what are the conservation values of this property? And, secondly, it is way, way, way overdue to have a conversation about the cost of kids to a community. Everybody is on the page of kids cost us money. And there's been many, um, through the University of New Hampshire, uh, different, you know, institutions and organizations that have studied this, and it is, we carry this myth forward, and so you'll hear more about that from me, and not, uh, I think it's time that, that, this would be a good time to, again, just have the facts and have a open, honest conversation about this, rather than just having that be, you know, people's reaction, because we've lived with that thought for years and years, and that, I'm not saying that wasn't the case at one point in time, but, um, so, that's.
So, and I'd just to add to that, and I need to follow up, um, with you or Patty, because Patty, Patty Sherman had participated in voluntary study on behalf of Deerfield. The board allowed it maybe two or three years ago, to study our population growth and things just like that, and I, there, I think there is a study, and I think it, it is what you're saying, that it doesn't add as much to the tax burden as far as the kids go as we once thought.
Right. And I, I know the Association of Realtors, uh, did a study, and I felt, I wasn't convinced. It wasn't a strong argument, and so, there's more to learn about it, but I would like to bring that to the table, just so that people can have, uh, again, just not reacting to what we've always believed to be true when it may not be so. So thank you again.
Great, thank you so much. Other comments?
Earl Rhodes, um, not here in my personal capacity, and the, the Conservation Commission has briefly, informally, without any, uh, debate, uh, really taken a, just a first look at it, and, um, because, and I should, I wish I had my hat on, because I'd turn it around and speak for a moment as an energy committee member, uh, because they have looked at that property as a potential solar farm kind of thing, um, which has, you know, it's a number of, of, um, possibilities, I guess. But the, um, in looking at it, some of the solar companies were a bit hesitant, because they thought it was, you know, a little wet, a little ledgy, so cost, it would be a high cost, and, and maybe not a great, um, setting for, for that. There's also energy, sort of, energy market issues that would impinge on it, so, um, so back to conservation. We took a, a, a very brief look at it, and it's not near other large conservation, it's near the, a little, little bit near the Rix Forest. But there are not a lot of conserved properties around that, but this would be a great anchor property for a, sort of a southern tier, uh, Bear Brook to Patuka Way, uh, wildlife pathway. There's more of one in the north of Deerfield. It contains a small portion of the highest-ranked habitat in the state designation, which I think is on one of the, I don't know exactly what map it is, but they're digital maps. And about a third of the property is in highest rank in habitat in the region. So, if the property's got conservation values, um, that, uh, would be attractive to the, to the Conservation Commission. I don't know what the Forestry Commission feels, but, um, the, um, and then the large remainder of the property is supporting an escape to, to those, so, uh, I mean, all in all, um, it, it, it is an attractive property from a conservation perspective. Yes, I think majority of the properties in that, it says an Appalachian oak pine forest, these small, um, number of small marsh shrub wetlands and peatmans scattered throughout, and, um, most of the properties identified as either a priority habitat or a potential wildlife quarter, as I was mentioning earlier, so, uh, and that's according to the Manhattan Fishing Game's wildlife quarters map. Uh, so, the, the answer from a conservation, just an initial voice, is, it's pretty nice to, for that, and, um, now, I'll, um, yeah, I, I think that's, uh, now, putting a more, a, a my personal hat on, um, in response to some of the prior comments, um, I, I, I do know that, um, if, uh, if Deerfield were really a great commercial, uh, opportunity, place, uh, you know, location, a lot of that would have happened already. We don't have sewer, we don't have, uh, water, uh, there are a lot of things that developers can get, you know, developers and businesses can get elsewhere, but this is not going to get here. So, the, the, the real, um, I, I think the real expense of, of trying to take this in a commercial direction is just, you think, uh, you think a new school was expensive, okay? You'd, uh, I think you'd have, you'd be surprised by how painful that would be, it's just, um, I, I think, and, and anecdotally, in talking to a number of people, there's, hey, there's a, I think, a lot of passion around this in town, um, and, um, so that, that's important. I, I think it would be terrific, and this echoes a couple of prior comments, uh, if, I don't know if it would be just a school, a school in the town, or, or because the planning, conservation, energy are all town functions. Uh, and so, some sort of working group to, to sort this out would be, uh, would, would facilitate the kind of conversation that was mentioned earlier. I don't think, I don't think there's anybody twisting our arms to, your arms, I should say, to, to do anything immediately. So make time your friend, and, uh, you know, come up with something that the town is happy with, and I think that's, uh, that would be a, uh, not a clever, but a smart way to do things.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many conservation areas there are in Deerfield right now? How many acres, how many areas?
Um, so, uh, I, do I have it memorized? No. But I can, yeah, we, that and all, that, that information is, is out there, I. I don't know that it's on, oddly enough, of course, a lot of the, a lot of that kind of information is on the Planning Board website. But, yeah, I mean, it's a checkable fact.
Do you know how many acres there are in Deerfield?
How many what?
Acres.
How many acres? It's 51 square miles. Yeah. A very small portion of that is, is water. I mean, that's the way that, you know. Our density is, population density is at about 100. Unlike most towns around us.
Errol, hasn't there been, there's been research too about when you put land in conservation, it actually saves the taxpayers money? Can you speak to all of that?
There's, well, I, so a previous speaker was talking about the, I don't know what they were speaking about, and I'm not questioning it, I just don't know. The cost of education, the cost of children. We all know they're not cheap, but.
In any shape or form.
Personally, all over the town.
Across the board. It's a universal. But there has been some scholarship arguing about the the benefit of conservation to a community, dollars and cents wise. I've asked about that, and I've been told there's more recent sort of scholarship on that. I don't know if it supports the same theme. I think it, I think it does, generally speaking. Just logically, you can get there. I mean, you know, the cost of services is higher when you have more people. And nobody's ever happy with the services and gas, so, you know. Expensive and make people unhappy at some level. But, but I think, I think the difference in the two kinds of scholarship really has to do with the, the structure of the arguments and not the, not the result. Do you see what I'm saying?
I'm going to put you on the spot a little, Mr. Conservation Committee. Can you explain, I think when people talk about conservation, there's this idea that we are going to give away the land. Are there, my understanding is there's various ways to go about it. We could transfer it to the town for a dollar for the purpose of a town forest. Or we could engage. Of course, yeah. We could engage a conservation group who would purchase the property. Is that correct?
Well, there, you know, it's as long as it is drawn. I mean, the net on conservation is that somebody either donates or sells the development rights to a property, okay? What happens beyond that is really between the buyer and the seller. So I've got a couple of properties in easement, very different easements. With the federal government, which surprisingly is actually very lenient. And, I mean, very, very tough when it comes to the conservation side, but the other uses, eh, I'm at it, you know? The other property is, was actually the rights were purchased by Bear Paw and the town. Some years, probably 20 years ago now, I can't really, I wasn't, I wasn't in town. But I studied it when I purchased it because I was concerned about, you know, the easement terms. And that, you know, every easement's different. So some easements you can hunt on, some easement holders demand that you can hunt on them, some don't. US government doesn't care one way or the other. Some prohibit some kinds of activity, some kinds of, but ultimately what you're doing is you're restricting the ability to develop, develop housing really on it. A lot of you can restrict other items, you know, solar, wind power, any kind of structure, permeable, impermeable surfaces, stuff like that. And there are exceptions to easements, you know, so that the easement holder can give. So, you're not, you're not giving away the land. The landowner retains the underlying land. There are simply restrictions placed on top of that by the easement holder. And so those, that's a negotiation, okay? Every, you know, you know about negotiating.
Sometimes.
So, yeah, so you can, the terms and conditions apply.
Yeah.
Different, different every time. The only thing that is consistent really is that, is that you're not, you're not building on it generally.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen.
And mining, mining, coal mining in particular in, please, for not.
Do we have coal? That was one of my ideas. Build a mine!
It doesn't talk about Bitcoin mining, but, but, yeah, so, I mean, generally, there are restrictions to what you can do. Generally, very, very few.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, I've seen around town the, like, Bear Paw, for instance, sign saying, this is a Bear Paw conservation area. So I'm not quite sure how that works. So that's a good explanation. Thank you.
And Southeast Land Trust has, I think they all have, I don't think they have the same kind of easements. They have different, Forest Society has a set of restrictions that they like to follow. Bear Paw has theirs, Selp has theirs. So, you know, it sort of depends on, and they're funded differently. The USDA is funded pretty well. You know, Selp is, and the other land trusts just don't match up. And even though they're well-funded, it's not the same ballpark.
And sometimes when you put something in conservation, it also requires stewardship. Somebody needs to be the steward of it. Is this true?
So, yeah, so that's actually, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the landowner is the landowner. And when you, when you sell an easement, you do take on obligations to do that. And that's, so the USDA easement, I'm particularly concerned about because they can come after me as much as they can come after somebody who threatens the land. So, but they're, you know, they're, they're good to work with, in my experience anyway. But there are certain things, there's a plan that you, all of these, these land trusts and the USDA encourage, well, not they require, but a management plan for the.
For the forest.
For the forest, or for the land, actually, forest management plan, generally speaking. But for wetlands, it's a little bit different. I don't think they necessarily require one, but they can encourage one, I think. But, yeah, so that, that gives you, and that's a bit of an upside in the sense that a lot of them, you can, you can harvest. So if you, depending on what's on your land, you can, you can, generally, you can pursue on a non-wetland easement, you can pursue agriculture. So you can, you know, you can do things.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if the school can, but we'd have to look into it.
Well, I don't know what the, what the restrictions on a school would be under RSA, but just broadly speaking, you know, an upland easement allows agriculture as defined by the state. And so, you know, the definition of agriculture is actually not all that narrow.
It's very broad.
It's very broad. There are, I could have a horse farm on the property.
So there's a piece of land that was donated and no longer owned by the original landowner. It was donated to, say, Bear Paw or one of the others. And they would then need stewardship for somebody to look after it, correct?
So there are two kinds of things, there's land ownership and there's stewardship. When you have an easement, you, you have to, you're participating in a stewardship plan. Through, through that, if you're the, if you're the landowner, if Bear Paw were to be given the land, they'd be the owner and they'd be monitoring, they'd be stewarding it both as a, as a, there wouldn't be an easement holder anymore. They'd own a fee. So, but they'd be the, the party that was responsible for the land, because, you know, in that sense.
I don't remember, but in the past, maybe it was brought before the taxpayers to ask for money to pay for stewards on certain parcels. I don't know, is that, is that a thing? Was that a thing before?
What do you mean?
If they didn't have any money in their conference to pay to steward it, and they wanted somebody else to come in and steward it, that they were going to charge a fee. Is that something that I want before a vote? I feel like I heard something like that years ago.
Well, with the, with the Clifford, I don't know if there was a, with the Clifford property, there was, I mean, I haven't really studied any but my easements I'm involved with. But the monitoring of, or the stewarding, I guess, of it, if, I mean, there are foresters and land management companies who would do that kind of thing. Okay. I'm actually working a little bit on something that's sort of related to that because when you have an open, open space housing development, oftentimes the open space doesn't actually have an owner per se that, you know, that looks after it, which is sort of a problem. It's a statewide problem. But, I mean, you can get somebody to look after it. Typically, the landowner, you know, looks after it. Am I answering your question? I don't mean not to be answering your question.
Sorry.
I have a question. I, I know a resident asked me last week, or told me last week, and I didn't get to do any of my own research. Sure you'd be able to tell me is that when land in the town is taken out of current use, that the town actually only gets 1% of that fee.
That is inaccurate.
What's that?
That is inaccurate. When land comes out of current use, because I, and I'm not a lawyer, and I don't play one on TV, but.
I am, and I don't know anything about this.
But the land use change tax, when you, when you develop a property that's in current use, it comes out of current use, something called the land use change tax. There's a whole RSA on that. And every town makes their own decisions in terms of who gets the funds from that. Typically, when a land comes out of current use, the town ends up starting to collect money through taxes and so forth, from the new property owner. And so the land use change tax typically, most towns in the state, ends up going to the conservation fund to help maintain other properties that help maintain the rural character of the town.
Right. That's what I was saying, is that only one, in our town, I think it's only 1%.
5%.
Goes, what is it?
5%. 5% goes to the general.
I think it's 1% from the deliberative.
5% goes to the, well, it's 1%, we need to collect more money.
Got to get changed.
No, no, it's 5% goes to the, to the general, to the general fund. 95% goes to the Conservation Commission. With the, with that, the Conservation Commission does a number of things. Right now, we're conducting a natural resources inventory, which is part of the master plan process for the town. And we're also undertaking a trails inventory, which is getting started on that to increase the, well, to manage and increase the, perhaps, I should say, perhaps, the trails offerings in town, which we have very little sort of knowledge about as a commission.
I would also argue that the Conservation Commission is part of the town.
Well, it is part of the town, yeah. But, but it's, the Conservation Fund is separate.
No, no, I understand that, but it does go to benefit the town.
Yeah, but it is, but in that sense, it's more like a, it's more akin to a trust fund.
Right.
Because the funds only, as it would, a trust fund only get spent on the purpose for which they're designated, they're not in the general fund. It's, we can talk about this a little bit later, but it's sort of like impact fees. Impact fees do not go into the general fund. They go into an impact fee fund, and it will only be spent on impact fee related items. Same with conservation, the conservation fund only can be spent on conservation related items. Now, again, there's a lot of saying that speaks to that, you know?
I.
But the number is 5%, not 1%.
I also don't know, I looked at the tax card briefly today, but I'm not sure if the land is in current use or if it's just not taxed because we're a nonprofit entity. So I'm not sure that it's in current use. So I'm not sure that land use change tax would come into play here.
I, well, you'd have to, it would have to go into development. If, that's when it gets assessed, I think, is when it goes into development. So you got a long way to go before you. And typically, land use change tax is, is paid by the person who develops.
Right.
The property, so.
I think.
Yeah, it's been 100%, it's been 50%.
Oh, yeah, I was just, I was told that they collected over $100,000 last year.
There's development going on.
Lots of development.
Lot of development going on, yeah. I don't know, no, the, so the, when you say land, you mean this year or last year?
I can't remember.
Last year, it was nowhere near $100,000. So, so far this year, there's been land use change tax assessed, and I don't know if it's been collected or not, $103,000 of 13, I think 13 parcels, this was listed in a select board meeting recently. But 13 parcels came out of current use into, into development. And that was $103,000. So a portion of that, the proportionate share of that was less than $100,000 for the, for the Conservation Commission. Anything else?
They didn't do any bioblets over on the state-owned property, did they?
There wasn't planned, it was, bioblets was here at the Freeze Town Forest.
Thank you.
Can the school put it into conservation? Because, I mean, it sounded in the beginning like it was presented to build a school on it. So, because, and then I'm hearing someone say that, you know, if we do decide to get rid of it, that the seller could possibly have first refusal. But I also wonder, is the school, I mean, it said we're limited what we can do with it.
I mean, we would have to, I don't know, we'd have to get all of this reviewed by, through the council.
Yeah, we're still in the process of finding all the historical documents too.
Yeah.
So that might find more clarity as we have, find more documents.
I'm kind of wondering about a partnership, if the school can do a partnership with some of them, like the Conservation Commission or some others, where students do some of the work, and then it will be an educational resource. But I don't know, because it says.
Right.
And do you consider it kind of uses, basically because you're already paying taxes on this property? Well, not paying taxes on it now, you're making more.
Yeah, with the current. Welcome back.
Cheers, Steph. I don't know why I have these brain freezes. Something you just, so many times in this last conversation, you kept saying stewardship of the land. I moved here in December of 99. I remember right after that road, there is actual road that runs up that property. And then I didn't pay much attention at that point in town. Of course, it got sold to the town, and somebody came and dumped a pig pile of dirt right at the base of the road. And.
It's still there.
It's still there. And gradually over time, it looks worse and worse. Every time I pull out of the middle room to the left, there's an eyesore. And I'm sure kids are going back there, they're drinking, their light fires, this trash. There's assorted debris. I don't know or recall in the last, was 25 years, ever seeing anybody who actually goes back there in any sort of maintenance cleanup. I mean, it is just a neglected, on a weekly basis, as I drive by it, there's people who pill in their stop. I'm quite sure there's people behind there and using all sort of assorted. So it'd be very interesting to see regardless of what the outcome of kind of a larger conversation is, maybe paying a little bit of it to somebody, possibly giving a little love to take, have a community day, then people walk up there and even see what we're all, you're talking about. Because it is, it's that big pile of dirt at the end of the road, but what's actually back there? And come up with a plan that even in the meantime, maybe a volunteer day, where everybody takes a blue trash bag.
Right.
And, you know, come up with some plan like that, that's, we're worried about it being taken care of later, but it's, it hasn't been taken care of for less.
Yeah, and there has been.
Several decades.
From the school bar, no, sort of. At least from the school board, no sort of forest management or land management that I'm aware of, so.
I can't recall of a time I've ever seen even a couple cars that seem to be parked in that general area. I mean, you have to park on Middle Row and kind of walk over. There's only spots for one or two cars, but even that doesn't happen. I don't want my dog up it, because I don't want her to pause, cut herself. At least we can have it a clear path. There is a road back there. That's that.
Thank you.
Jared Messina, Raymond Road. All the back and forth and the use of the word stewardship and conservation sparked two more things. One of the things that nobody mentioned is there is a historical significance. Right near the end of that property, there's actually a marker. Believe it was the home of one of the first Baptist churches in Deerfield. Probably not a huge deal, don't know exactly where it was, but it was enough to get a marker. The other thing is, for anybody who doesn't have a keen eye, this property actually has quite a bit of frontage. Not direct frontage, but within about 15 feet of the Lamprey River. And while the topography changes throughout, it's essentially downhill. So, things like hearing soccer fields that require chemicals and fertilizers, and any kind of commercial or industry being in there would definitely raise an eyebrow. The only way we can guarantee we don't have issues like that are by leaving it in conservation, leaving it woods. Aside from that, now, who, who knows what could happen? Who knows? But a good engineer could get passed in there, they could put a, they could put in a nuclear waste site, for all we know. But as it lies now, there's no threat to the town and the residents, both financially or it's just woods. Thank you.
Do I gotta say my name again?
You can ask the note taker, you don't know this is.
Great with more. So I think, clearly, there's a lot of questions. I think it would be really useful for everybody in town. If, as the board gets documents, you compile them into something that the town can access.
Yeah.
And, you know, take this slowly and carefully, because you only get one shot at it, whatever the outcome is.
I don't think there's a huge rush. I just know that we wanted to continue the conversation that we started last.
Yep. You know, I don't know how you let everybody get access to these documents. I don't know what, what you format you put them in, but.
We can put it on our website. I think I've started that process actually, this, my admin system.
Yeah, and if we have, you know, boards in town, whatever, commissions, boards that have information pertinent, maybe they could feed it into there, too, either directly or indirectly, just sending it to you.
Two additional comments. One, whatever, I mean, it's, it's a good thought that school may want to look into taking care of it, seeing what's out there, and, and, and sort of assessing it. I don't know how you all would do that, but that'd be a good thing to do. The other thing is, the, the Zet would be happy, I'm sure, to, to help with any, any educational, you know, housing of documents, or, you know, providing an educational resource, since it is A501(c)(3), with public education as its purpose. Have you helped with that as well?
Thank you.
I have an item I'd like to add for consideration on the list of the property.
Oh, sure.
That's, I forget.
Yeah.
Because I haven't heard it mentioned, and I know the purpose of this property initially was to be used for educational in school. Just adding it to the list for consideration is that this is an agriculture community. Thought of potentially putting an agriculture center or technical center for kids. It could be a regional type school or program for trades in agriculture, might be something to consider as well. And you might be able to do dual use, depending on how big that is. You keep some of it in conservation and have it be accessible. And as a fulfillment.
Got it. Thanks. Other comments before we close the public forum. All right, we will move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome to stick around. I won't be offended if you leave, but we're going to be doing a budget, budget breakdown, so drop in, it's going to be very fun. So this is the second time that I've prepared a, what I'm calling a budget breakdown. So, the school budget, as we all in this room know, is very big. And getting a packet of information is very overwhelming. It's hard to sort of tell what is in the budget, what we're paying for. So the budget breakdown is sort of my best attempt at categorizing the various parts of our budget. If you want to go to the next slide. There is a big caveat that I always give, which is reasonable minds can very much differ on how to categorize things in the budget. So I, I went through line by line and categorized each line into where I thought makes sense. People could certainly organize it differently. When you get our budget packet, it's organized differently than how I'm presenting it tonight. For instance, I'll give a, a small example. Special education busing. I have included it in the category of transportation. So you can see our total transportation costs. Some people may say it belongs in the special education line. That's totally fine. We can, you know, we could make this presentation 100 different ways. And I do break down the special ed costs later. So you will see it broken down that way. It's just, in my mind, it is a clearer image of our different costs, doing it as I did. But, again, we might all disagree.
And this is very much ahead of time. Budget season really won't be until late for October, November.
Correct. And this was for our current year budget. So this is for the 25, 26 default budget. This is not for the upcoming budget season. That, that word will kick off in October, November. So, the total 25, 26 default budget was $20 million, 481, 475. That represents an increase with the para contract, so it's slightly more than we saw at the ballot, because we had to factor in the para contract that was subsequently approved as a separate one, on a, separate election. So the in, the total increase was over $1.5 million for the default budget.
I can go to the next slide.
Not only because of paras. Not only because of paras, we, we, don't worry, we break down the increases. Don't worry. Okay, so this is, the budget breakdown is by category. I know this is very small. We will publish the presentation so that you can see it. So this is sort of my best attempt to break down the biggest chunks of our budget. So, DCS teachers, staff, salaries, benefits is 45% of our budget. High school tuition, second highest, student services, and guidance, so that's special education services, or counseling, or all sorts of things that our student services go in that one. Transportation. Then we have administrative, so we have our portion that we pay to the SAU for administration. We have insurance, we have attorney's fees. There's, I think, school board has costs, not many, but we have some. That all goes in administration. Then building, maintenance, and operations is our third lowest. And then food service, and our lowest is a little confusing. It's the curriculum, library, co-curricular, and tech. So, I would love to see more of money put into that personally, but it is our lowest category of funds. Next. Okay, so this is salaries for DCS people by position type. So, the vast majority of our staff, the, the money for our staff goes to regular education teachers. And then the next chunk is special ed teachers. We have special ed paras. Principal and admins make up 5%. Guidance and nurse make up 4%. Maintenance, 4%, library and tech, 3%. Regular ed paras is 2%. Special ed admin, so we have a special ed coordinator and a special ed secretary, we have 2%. Subs, interns, and tutors are 2%, and then co-curricular salaries are make up 1% of the budget.
Of the salary.
Of the salary line, correct, of the salary line. So, and you can see, so the salary total is 5.7 million, and then the benefit total is 3.385. And that includes insurance, training, course reimbursement, stipends, and retirement benefits. Right? So what accounts for the budget increase? So I took line by line all of the increases from the last default budget. And I categorized them into these various categories. So, the $1.5 million budget increase, 36% of that is because of high school tuition costs. And then 30% is increases to special ed services. 26% are DCS teacher, staff, salaries, and benefits. So some of that is the para contract, but certainly not $398,000 of an increase. That is for CBA costs, that's for insurance costs, that's for any sort of salary and benefit increase. There was an increase in food service costs. I think everyone has seen food service increase. Transportation, that cost is likely because of our contracts that go up every, every year. Could also be some special ed transportation costs that increased. Administration, so that is, I think that chunk is largely the increase from our SAU contribution. So each school in the SAU splits the SAU Fund I budget based on the size? There's a, there's a formula.
Yeah.
So it says how much of the Fund I budget that each of the schools pays. There was a decrease of $7,000 in curriculum, library, and co-curricular, and there was a $21,000 decrease in building, maintenance, and operations. That, some of that might be because there were one-time expenditures. So in a default budget, things carry forward unless there are one-time expenditure, or.
We paid for it in the trust fund.
Right. So, yes, so those were the drivers of the budget increase. Okay, special education breakdown. I will refer everyone to our special education presentation that we did last fall for a much deeper dive into special education costs. And we can, if there is interest, revamp that presentation, because I think it's really important in an area that people don't understand the funding for that well. So special placements make up 43% of our special education program. That is private placements for students with unique needs that can't be met at DCS, and it also includes high school special ed services. DCS staff, so those are our teacher, our special ed teachers, case managers, paras, occupational therapists, speech language pathologists. They make up 25% of the special ed program costs. Contracted services, so those are staff that we don't have here, that we have to contract out. So there might be PT, para support for students not at DCS. Behavioral specialists, school psychologists, vision, hearing, and SAU administrative services for special education. That is 18%. Transportation. This is special ed transportation. The K through 12 program makes up the vast majority of that. So that's transportation that's outside of the eight, eight buses that we have. And then there is some for summer programming as well. Summer programs are extended school year services at DCS and also have special placements. So we see some students here over the summer, and we also have special placements for them outside. That makes up 2% of our program costs. Then supplies and tech are less than 1% of the program cost. I didn't include, in the special ed presentation that we did, we did a breakdown of how special ed is paid for. And the answer is generally that is paid for by the taxpayers. We do get some funding from the federal and state government. I didn't include that here, because revenue sort of factors into our budget, but also not really. So I don't want to confuse the two topics. You know, we don't really consider revenue when we're talking about what our expenditures are going to be. The revenue comes in when we're figuring out the tax impact, or the, the tax rate. But it is an interesting point of reference, because I think there, there is some idea that the state and federal government reimburse our entire program cost, which is nearly $6 million. And that is not close. I think it maybe reimburses 15%. That was at least the calculation from the last presentation we did.
Which is available on the SCU website. So they don't have that 50% from the state, 50%.
No, no.
Combined total.
I think, so when we did the presentation, our program costs were estimated to be $5 million, and we received revenue of $700,000 for those programs. So how, how those things are funded is complicated. And we can go, we'll probably go over during lunch and season again, because you have to pay a certain amount before you get any reimbursement, and then there's a whole formula of that. But we can go over all of that, if it's helpful. Oh, the program costs, I will say, for special education don't include the fringe benefit costs for staff. I, I don't have a way of figuring out the fringe benefits for the special ed staff, but we don't break it down in the budget that way, so. It is likely slightly higher. I mean, more than likely, slightly higher than $6 million.
And your costs for special education match your percentage of your population that is identified as well. So you guys have roughly around 20-ish percent of your student population identified, and that's about how much percentage of your budget, especially, which is about where you, that's how you want to see it.
Got it.
Isn't it, well, if this was 6,000 and the budget's 20,000, that's 30%.
No, your overall budget.
Or, isn't the overall budget 20,000?
20 million.
I meant 20 million.
Well, it's, so I was referring to the first slide. She, that first slide, she, Kendra broke down regular ed student services. Student services was roughly about 20% of the overall budget.
Yeah, that doesn't include transportation.
Right, I was just saying, if you do the math from what you have, which is about 6 million, 6 million out of 20 million is 30%.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's roughly. So in, Deerfield special ed population isn't necessarily 20%, I think it's a little bit larger. So, it's not far off from where you guys are at for your student population.
How do we, there's been a lot of questions about the, the DCS staff versus contracted services. And I would assume that contracted services would cost more money, but how do we, how do we figure that out? How do we make that comparison, see if it would be a savings?
If we contracted things out versus having people in.
It would be 45%.
Yeah, I mean, we could generally ask.
I can answer that.
Oh, yeah, sure, we have an expert here.
It depends on our percentage of needs. So, say we have a student who has physical therapy needs. Let's say we only have five kids who need physical therapy services, and it only ends up being an hour a week. We, there's no way we're going to be able to hire our own employee for one hour per week to provide those services. This is not even, that's not possible. So we would have to contract out, because people who are physical therapists have to have certain degrees, certifications, all those things. So we would contract out with an agency to pay for that one hour a week. And that's just an example, I'm not saying we actually have an hour a week. So we look at the services, how many kids we have, if we can make, like, a part-time position, we can make a half-time position, we'll boost for that position. But if we can't fill it, we have an obligation to contract out to fill that position, because those services are legally required. But if we can't fill it, we have an obligation to contract out to fill that position because those services are legally required.
But the question is, is it cheaper to contract out services than having staff?
It varies. So it, it would be cheaper to contract out services if it's only for an hour a week. Because in order to hire our own physical therapist, we'd have to go through a whole bunch of stuff, and it would still probably end up being that cost or more because of that specialist's nature. And we would. Right, 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 exactly. So, and in general, I always say that the contracted services are probably going to cost us more, but it's not like a landslide more because it just varies on the type of service that is needed, how specialty it is, and, you know, how much we can fill that type of service in our building. And depends on the kids. So, but in general, we try not to do contracted services as much as possible because you have less say over that employee as a general, in general, their performance and the cost. We can't control those costs as well as we can if they're our own employee. So we try to avoid contracted services.
I also imagine if you hired the person, you'd more consistency. You know, year to year, that student gets to know the person.
Right, that's, you have less control over those results.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
So why, why is that benefit cost not known?
I mean, I, I'm sure it could be known. It would depend year to year on which staff are taking benefits. It's certainly not the case that all of our staff take benefits. So I can't, there's not like a per-staff cost for benefits because I don't know how many of our staff take benefits.
Also different plans.
Right, and there are different plans. So I don't know. You know, we don't break it out in our budget of regular ed staff benefit costs, special ed benefit cost.
Will you include, like, things like FICA and things like that are also included in there?
Right.
So the way that it's grouped into the budget, it doesn't go any, what type of staff? It just says all FICA goes into this line, all health insurance goes into this line. We could go back through and look at who has what service plans. But that would be per employee, and it still would go straight into that line. Like, it doesn't, it all gets grouped into those single lines. It doesn't get broken out. We could delineate that out, we just don't do it that way in the.
Right, they're very not high hat when I'm making this. And also, I mean, it could change, like, if someone could get married halfway through the year and now they need a family plan. Change of health insurance. So we could give a rough estimate, maybe, but I don't know that we could specifically say the benefit cost for. The special information is on this somewhere.
We have the.
We have to collect it, yeah, yeah.
It just isn't going to be presented that way in the budget, that's all.
Right, right.
We can absolutely delineate how much each of our employees is contributing to that cost. But it's not going to be presented in the budget that way because those lines are identified as, like, a health insurance line is a, it doesn't segregate special ed and general, it's just a one-budget line. But we absolutely have a cost per individual of those benefit lines. That's just in our backend of our system, not in the actual budget.
Okay, upcoming budget season information. So if you want to follow along with budget process, which I encourage everyone to do, it's, you know, highlight of our year. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget is, is currently up on the SAU website. Every week when we review the budget for DCS as well as the SAU, I believe, all of that information will be made public on the SAU website. So anything that we're talking about budget-wise gets uploaded to the SAU website because we want people to look at it. Importantly, there are two full SAU budget meetings. So the SAU budget is its own beast. We have the DCS budget, and then the SAU budget is its own whole thing. So the executive board, I believe, already received their, their first draft of their budget. They're already working on it. The, there will be full SAU budget meetings, which means all board members from all five districts go and fight about the budget on October eighth and October twenty-second. Those are open meetings, not well-attended generally. But if people want to learn more, I would definitely encourage people to come. The October eighth meeting is going to be much more informational in terms of how to read the budget. It is, there are different funds, and it gets very confusing to understand. I sort of, I sort of know it now, after three years or so. But, and if you have questions, you can feel free to reach out, and I can explain the best that I can. But if you're, if you're interested in the SAU budget, I would definitely encourage the October eighth meeting. They're not traditionally televised, so I would go in person if you want to learn about it. Then the school board meetings, we start, this is my best guess, by the way, of our budget calendar based on history of.
Wow.
We'll see how accurate I was. So I, I think, okay, you can just tell me.
Well, you read through your dates and I'll.
Okay, I know if they're. So what I, my memory is that mid-October, we received the principals' budget, which is DCS staff, DCS building, stuff, sort of very DCS-specific. And then Amber, our business administrator, comes in November, the first meeting of November, and reviews the entire budget. December or November fifth?
Yeah, all right, nailed it.
November fifth. And then we, as a board, go through it November fifth and then the nineteenth. The final budget meeting for this board will be December third. We have to get the budget over to the MVC for their work to start on December ninth. So we have to get them the budget before that.
Correct.
My request, and you can do whatever you want, but my request is, if we're, if we're proposing any big changes to the budget that require a lot of calculations, that we do it before December third. And I say that to save us an emergency meeting. So on December third, we need to approve a budget amount that gets sent to the MVC. If someone on December third, for instance, made a motion to, you know, not have this staff position anymore, it would take a lot of calculation to figure out the impact to the budget. So it's salary, it's benefits, if applicable. There might be other things that we can't calculate in the meeting. So if we, that motion was made on December third, we'd have to have an emergency meeting to then, after Amber had the chance to calculate what the new budget amount would be, we'd have to have an emergency meeting. We'd have to do it by Friday so that we can get the budget to the MVC. So my request is make motions, if you're interested, on November fifth or November nineteenth. And basically, if you want to change something in the budget, all you have to do is make the motion. Or, I mean, we could talk about it, and if there's consensus, then we can make the motion. Then the, we delivered the school budget to the MVC. There's a series of meetings all November where the MVC can make additions or subtractions to our budget. December, sorry, I don't know it.
That works too.
Yeah. The MVC public hearing is January thirteenth. That is the public's opportunity to come and give input before the MVC votes on the final budget numbers that they will present at deliberative. Deliberative is early February. I don't know if it's the first or second week.
I have it, it's February seventh.
Okay.
I hope we got that accurate.
I wasn't sure if it was, so it's, last year it was like around, I won't say it, so. I wasn't sure if it was the first or second weekend.
I decided surgery, so it was only eight, nine.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere around there. Okay, next slide. So in making this, and while we're going into budget season, there have been a lot of ideas that have been thrown around about how to reduce the budget, if that is the goal of this board. I have taken the liberty of, of creating a non-exhaustive list of ideas that have been mentioned. I don't want it to be interpreted that these are my ideas or that I am proposing any of these. But I just wanted to lay it out. So if someone wanted to make a motion about the budget, there are things that need to be considered in terms of the budget. They're not always that straightforward. So these are things that we would need to think about if someone were to propose it, for instance. So I don't, we don't need to go through these ad nauseam. And we certainly don't need to debate them tonight because no one is making a motion about any of these things right now. I wouldn't think, I mean, you could, but. So I'll just go through them very briefly. So we could get rid of high school busing as a general premise.
Why do you have the asterisks at the end?
You know what, I meant to take that off.
Okay.
I think it was like, oh, this is a, this is the cost, but also there's other things to consider. But then every single one of them was the cost of another thing to consider. And so then I forgot to remove that. Oh, thank you. So, right, so you could potentially save one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for three high school buses. However, we still need to provide transportation to special education students, so we could have to weigh the cost and benefit. So currently, a lot of our special education students are on regular buses. So would cutting one hundred and ninety-five thousand actually save money if we have to special bus specialized students? I don't know. Eliminating kindergarten class, that could save the salary of one teacher plus benefits if they take benefits. And then, you know, are we able to meet the needs of our students with larger kindergarten classes? Will we need more staff in the remaining rooms to help with larger class sizes? So things to consider. Eliminating the preschool. So the way that the preschool is set up is that, and Jess can speak more to this than I can. We have to provide special education services to three and four-year-olds in the least restrictive environment. And we have the preschool program because in most situations that solves that problem. We have a special education teacher in the classroom who is teaching preschool along with a regular education teacher. So there are two teachers in the preschool. There's a regular ed teacher and a special ed teacher. So if we got rid of those two positions, we would still have to provide and contract out special education services for three and four-year-olds plus the cost of transportation. And it has to be in the least restrictive environment.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we make some money from that. We charge tuition. I, I don't know how much that goes into the salaries, but that's something you have to think about, too.
Yeah.
You would lose the whatever.
Lose whatever revenue. So we charge tuition for non-identified students to attend preschool. So it, we have grant funding for some of the preschool program. And in order to do that, we have to maintain a ratio of roughly fifty-fifty identified students and regular education students in the preschool. So we charge tuition for the non-identified fifty percent of students in the preschool.
But we would still be responsible for those.
Yes, service.
Correct, yeah.
And special ed services. And you risk your.
But we're, yeah, but we're not responsible for the, the transportation for, for the non.
Right.
Oh, not.
Correct.
To the plus.
But you still have to survive it.
But they're not.
Right, but we, either way.
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Jess, before we started doing this, didn't we have, we, we had special education services? We had people that went to their homes to provide that service.
Or schools.
Yeah, you still have your personnel costs. You don't save on your personnel costs because you still have to provide services.
And transportation would probably be more because right now it's in Deerfield, so a lot of parents do drive their children. If they were to go to another, outside of the district preschool program, we'd have to provide that transportation for them.
Right, and then there, there's also been talk about sending, like, could we send our students to the SAU preschool? Because there is an SAU preschool that is in Allenstown.
Allenstown.
I mean, we could certainly look into it. We would have to pay, obviously, for all of our students to attend, and transportation.
We have car seats for all of the babies.
And.
And so that, that means that if we're sending our special ed preschool kids, say, to Allenstown, we also would be, we'd have to still have to make sure there's a roughly fifty-fifty with our preschool.
The SAU.
We do that.
The SAU does that.
So like, let's say we inundated them with.
We would have to hire two more teachers.
Right, so let's say, yeah, so let's say we have, I don't, I'm making numbers up because I don't remember off the top of my head. Let's say we have thirteen identified preschool students. Us or the SAU would have to find thirteen regular ed students to maintain that ratio roughly. So that's now twenty-six more students that are going to the Allenstown preschool. So we would have to hire more teachers at the Allenstown preschool to accommodate that influx of students. And whether they could have it still at Allenstown, I don't know. If, if the space is now getting too large, there's now too many students. I don't know, I don't, I don't know the answer.
And so, but at this time, if parents didn't want to send their regular ed preschool children to preschool, they're not, they're not required to send them.
No, I just, my child didn't attend preschool here.
Correct. No, no child is, even the students that are eligible for special education are not required to attend.
Right.
But we're required to provide their services.
Correct, right.
Which might be at the home or something.
Right.
I mean, I remember back before we had the program here, you might have, because a parent works in Manchester, they might have their child in a policeman in Manchester. So. Yeah, so you'd have to send people to that program to provide the services for that child in Manchester. And at one point, it used to be trying to use the people we already had in the building. So you might have a speech pathologist drive to Manchester, provide services for that child, and then drive back to Deerfield to try to provide services for other kids in the building. But then you lose all that transportation time for that person to be working with students.
When you're paying for it.
Yeah.
We, I mean, we came up with preschool because it saved us a ton of money when we first started it. That's why we did it. Saved us a lot of money, it made it easier for us. And we also had, we had some say in how the kids were being educated as well.
It's also an investment in those kids' future and their, your prevention of further intervention when they get here in kindergarten or first grade and they didn't have those early interventions.
Right, yeah, I mean, a lot of times.
The chances of them needing more expensive services are highly likely if they didn't have those early interventions.
Yeah. Okay, half-day kindergarten. We, again, are required to provide services for students in kindergarten who have been identified. It's, there is probably some cost saving in having them in the building so that they could get services here, but I don't know for sure. So if we offered half-day kindergarten, I think it would only be two teachers. If we, there are four kindergarten classes currently, so if you only have half-day, I think that would only be two teachers. But then, can we adequately prepare students for first grade with that model? And then transportation costs may increase because we have to offer busing, so there would be additional bus runs. So if students are only half-day, we'd have to bring them home, and then we'd have to bring the next set of students in. So those are bus runs that are half-day during the day that we don't really do for, obviously. All right, next. Okay, eliminating an art and/or a music class. So some considerations for that are, are we still able to meet state requirements if we only have limited staff to teach those top, those subjects? And then I think a bigger issue is how will we meet this, the collective bargaining agreement terms without those prep periods for teachers? So if students don't have a special every day, let's say, because, you know, one art teacher can accommodate every, can't have a student every single minute of their day, because that would be a violation of their CTA. So we could, I don't think kids would have a daily special class. So then how are we allowing the necessary prep period for teachers if the students are not in their special that day? And also, are we doing students a disservice by cutting these programs? And also, are we doing students a disservice by cutting these programs? Or the amount that we would potentially save? Um.
I think as concerned that with music and your literacy scores, um, those typically go in and in. Yeah. Because music increases your literacy ability.
I also wonder, like, for music, if we only had one music teacher, what would happen with band and chorus? And I know something, I know, it would probably not be offered during the day. And so, I know it was brought up at one point of, well, why not have it in the afternoon after school? Well, one, that could eliminate some kids from being able to participate, but also, I would think you would have to pay
Yes.
the music teacher or the person who did it. A stipend for doing it after school because it wouldn't be part of.
Their.
It would require extra benefits, though, of the stipend position.
We don't, assuming they'd be willing to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
But we don't, I mean, I don't know, it could be the case that no one is taking benefits, so. I don't. I don't know, I'm not that swayed by benefits, but people can propose whatever they would like.
Like, I never took the health benefit to the school.
I think it's less.
I think one year I took it because Jeff went back to school, but all the years that I taught here, I, I never used the health benefit.
I think it's quite, um, cost prohibitive for a lot of people. I think that the, I think less than fifty percent of our staff took benefits, health, health insurance benefits, is my memory. Um.
It must fluctuate through the years.
It does.
Every year, of course, is, yes.
Yeah, I was just saying, the stipend, you can't really compare the stipend with the salary.
Right, I'm just.
Yes, I understand.
Yes, stipend.
Right.
Right.
That's, so if you have one teacher with benefits, even if they took it or not, and they collected a stipend on top of that for providing that after-school service. Can't compare that stipend cost to us with, with another salary with benefits or whatever.
Um, so there has been chatter about eliminating math reading specialists or interventionists. Um, a lot of these, like, the potential savings is a huge range depending on what you want to do. Um. But, so the math and reading specialists and interventionists currently help develop and implement curriculum across eight grade levels and provide additional support to students. How would we offer additional support for students without these roles and who would assist with curriculum creation?
Well, right now, you have a tiered intervention system in place so that, that these people are an integral part of. So, you remove them and your tiered intervention system would have to be completely redone, and you may not be able to meet the needs of those kids who are doing tier-two, tier-three interventions.
Like, yeah.
More than performing at grade level.
And would there just be cost somewhere else?
That's something to look at.
Um, next. Okay, increasing class sizes, eliminating grade level teaching positions. Um, I think a big consideration here is do the physical classrooms accommodate larger-sized classes? And also, will we need to help, do we need to get more staff to help with larger class sizes? You know, is it the case that it's reasonable to have twenty-five-plus kids in a.
I think, I've already done all that math.
Right.
It's not.
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm putting out the things that I have heard.
You do have that information, so we can bring that up and present that.
I do.
Yeah.
Um, pay-to-play for extracurriculars, so we currently spend about sixty-five thousand for the cost of co-op or salaries, supplies, and officials. Um, I, it would be cost prohibitive for students. There's already a lot of fundraising for the sixth and eighth grade middle school trips. So, I'm not sure that that would be a very, um, well-received idea to cut costs. Um, and eliminate administrative positions, we hear a lot that there are too many adults in the school. Um, besides the principal and assistant principal, there are three administrators, I think.
Three.
No, no, there's three, including those.
Well, there's two, there's a.
Principal, vice-principal, and.
Principal, vice-principal, and special ed.
Yes, there's only three.
Those are the only administrators.
Yeah, there's just three.
Oh, okay, I mean, sorry, I'm not administrator staff.
Oh, that's, oh, oh.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, support is mostly administrative.
Correct.
But there's, yeah, but there's just.
But there's three.
Three administrators.
Administrative position. Or whatever we ought to call them.
Yeah, now I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, sorry, so, like, support staff.
Yeah.
So, the secretaries who answer the phones, um.
The score phones.
Or.
Special ed and then assistant, or just secretary.
Okay. Um. I don't know how the work would still be completed if we eliminated any of those positions. And if we're asking staff to take on other parts of that workload, are the, are we going to have to raise this to compensate for the actual workload? Okay, next. Um, we've heard this over the years, is that the SAU costs are, um, extreme. That's not my phrasing, but, um, so leaving the SAU or establishing our own SAU. I do not know if there is potential savings there. I think there would have to be some serious studying to see what services we would have to pay for and potential savings. I know that, um, Northwood and Nottingham, I think, recently dissolved their SAU and they have their own individual SAUs now. Do they have cost savings? I have no idea. Um, I, the town would need to vote on this issue, so we can't really do anything about it this budget session. Anyway, you could put something on the warrant if you wanted to explore it, um, but I don't know that there would be savings. Um, single high school contract, I can't say if it would be cheaper to go with a single high school contract. It would depend on what school is selected. And again, this issue should be voted on by the town, in my opinion. So, we, I don't know that we could tackle this for this budget session.
Well, I think you have some of that data, it was cheaper when you had a single contract. And then your high school cost increased when you went to.
Well, you, right, but if, if the town decided.
It's what they wanted, right.
If, if the town decided we want one school and it's going to be co-ground, then it's not going to be cheaper.
Those costs were going up there.
Right.
So, it wasn't.
They were.
We did not know if it was a contract. Because there was a, the rate was unknown, only one year was known. The first year was known, the subsequent years were unknown.
I'd have to look at the.
I don't agree with that.
Neither with that.
We did.
Because there was a contract.
Right, and if you look at the contract before, that's not true. And if, we never got to have a long-term contract again because the voters didn't want it.
Yeah.
So, we never got to that point where we actually had a contract, so I don't agree with that. And it was like sixteen thousand, nine hundred was the start, whereas co-brand was always twenty thousand. So, I, I just don't agree with that as a fact. I know I've heard that before, but I want to pull out all the contracts and check, but we never had a final long-term contract with Concord, so what are we comparing it to?
That's what I would, there's no.
Yeah, we did have one, and the one before did not do that.
Right, and I, I looked previously at, um, when we were doing all the high school stuff. And I think there was a historical, um, increase of around three-point-five percent every year.
Yeah.
For Concord. And I don't know that the language in the proposed contract changed wildly from that, so I don't think. We had anticipated, um, that Concord would have gone up that much.
Yeah, it got shot, it got shot down very fast, so to say that that contract was the same, we didn't have a contract.
Yeah, that's not what I said, I was, I, I didn't, I was talking about what the two, the contracts that were compared, so the ones that we had.
The one that we had initially, the long-term one, didn't, it only had that, like, three-point-five percent each year increase.
I don't think it was specifically spelled out, but there was a provision where it looked back on five years of costs. And that, that was an increase actually from the previous twenty-year contract of only three-year lookback. So, we anticipated that it would be three-point, three-point-five percent or less.
Well, I think either way, I mean, your, your taxpayers were very clear that they wanted that choice, and that was a cost that they were willing to incur, so. It'd be an awfully quick, like, boomerang to go back to trying to go back to a single contract.
And quite frankly, I mean, if we really wanted to save money, we need to send our kids to Pepper.
Right.
So. They just have a set cost, these are our cost, and this is it, there's none of that, all extra stuff.
And they're very low.
Yeah.
So, I think that's it. Questions, ideas, suggestions? I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to get into the meat of our budget tonight, we don't have a budget in front of us. Um, but, you know, we're, we constantly hear that, that we need to cut costs, we need to, um, lower taxes, which I don't disagree with, but I don't have a great answer of how.
I think, um, I mean, one thing I'd like to know is, I'd like to know more about, like, how you said that tiered system works in special ed and, you know, like, how many case managers do we have for each grade level? And when did we end up going to free math interventionists and free literacy works because of COVID? And we got grant money and we included a physician and then we just never got rid of it, like, I want more information on that.
Chris and I have already been talking about a lot of that stuff, so, and we'll, that'll definitely be coming out, you know, as we get into October and start picking numbers together.
Exactly, well, I do. That's, that's such my request.
And if there's anything that we're ever missing, and you're like, oh, I wish I could see that, just, just let me know. Happy to provide whatever you're asking for, um, as long as I just know if you need it at that time.
Right.
Um, one other thing is, um, is the teacher contract next year?
Next year.
Negotiations are next year.
I just had my head, it was this year.
I did, too.
When am I letting a phone call?
Yeah.
But, um, I did, I did put together, I used the state website of the average teacher salary and compared Deerfield, all the SAU schools and local schools in the area, and there was a huge bump in the year for Deerfield. And I will send you that, what I put together. I guess I'd just like to know why there was such a huge bump in the average salary for Deerfield, it was pretty substantial. And then, then this is data from the state, so maybe it's incorrect, whatever, I just would like to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I did my own calculations based on our roster.
Yeah.
And I don't know what data they were using, so I can't say that their data is incorrect.
Right.
But my, my average is much lower.
Yeah, I, and, and I know, yeah, and, and I don't know if, maybe it's because there was a new contract or maybe it's because I was the
It might have been an addition.
Masters plus forty-five, maybe that, maybe, I don't know, but I'd just like that explained to me.
Sure.
So, I, I'll send that to you, so.
Happy to get it.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I just, I, we didn't receive this at a time, so, all right.
Yeah, you, totally, um.
But we have a lot of time to talk about it, so stuff goes up at the budget, you can just put it on the next meeting or whatever, right?
Oh, yeah.
We will be talking about the budget ad nauseam.
Yes, yes. It's gonna be for a while.
And if you have specific questions about the presentation, let me know, I'm happy to answer them. Um, it's really, you know, the purpose of it is just to paint a picture of what is in our budget. And. And hopefully.
Well, this is a bird's eye view, this is not.
Totally.
Yeah, this is like the forty-thousand-foot view.
Totally. There's a lot to the budget, a hundred and eighty lines, I believe. Okay. We move on to the New Hampshire School Board Association proposed resolutions. Um, so for those who aren't familiar with this process. The New Hampshire School Board Association, every year has a delegate assembly, which is on October twenty-fifth.
Already registered.
Ellen is our delegate. Um. School boards have the opportunity to, to propose resolutions, to be voted on by the delegates. So, the resolutions are essentially advising the New Hampshire School Board Association of the direction that they should take in a lot of legislative action and, I don't know, what else to use or.
legislative action, yeah.
Yeah.
What they should keep their eyes on and pay attention to and get involved in.
Yes, so the proposed resolutions, we have to vote on each one of these, whether or not our board supports it or not. We are not doing that tonight. I wanted to make sure that people had enough time to review all of the proposed resolutions, and we are going to vote on them at the next meeting. Um, so just wanted to draw your attention to all of those.
And I can I make a comment on that?
We need to, um, so when you look at them also, like, schools propose resolutions, there's one in here where three schools propose the same idea and they pick the one they like the best. But, um, at the bottom, it'll either say that they agree with it, they disagree with it, or they have an alter, like, if they disagree, then they have an alternative resolution. Just change the language a little bit, so you just have to kind of go through that.
Yeah, so the vote will really be, do we support the proposed resolution? If not, do we support the alternative resolution if there is one?
Right, yeah, that's how they vote.
Um.
And sometimes the schools will just say, I withdraw my resume and we go with the alternative.
Got it. So, Ellen will go and then represent our votes.
Yeah, I vote for us.
At the delegation, so however we voted, she will then vote that way.
And sometimes they'll change the language a little bit, so just having some discussion about it lets me know which direction we're headed, so I can make a decision to vote if it gets changed.
Yeah, anybody's welcome to attend, like, anybody can register as a guest, you just can't be a voting member. And so, if, if anybody wants to go, you're more than welcome to go and register. Um, you just won't be able to say what the Deerfield Board's vote was, that only Ellen can do that, it's really interesting.
Um. Okay. So, next meeting, we're running on those, so, um, think about them in advance. Um, twenty-five, twenty-six board goals. I don't think.
I didn't see them.
Yeah, so the, in the drive, the board goals are in a separate folder, so. No, no, that's fine, it's okay. I should have, uh, put it in this folder, probably.
Oh, I see them.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're right here.
I can, I reviewed them today, but I was.
They're in the drive.
They're in the drive, but in a separate.
Shouldn't they be the twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yep, so those are our ones from last year.
And you see twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Board goals.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
And this year's.
Did you guys not do goals last year?
We did.
We did.
Okay. What is the twenty-three, twenty-four?
Oh, yeah.
No, we did, um. I can try and find those.
Okay.
Okay, we, we don't necessarily have to compare it to our current goals, we can make up new goals.
But, where, so this is twenty-five, twenty-six goals, so you're saying we have twenty-four, twenty-five goals?
We do.
Right.
Somewhere.
So, my, the reason I brought this up is, is weird.
Yeah, we're in the school year.
Right.
We should, we should create goals.
And we had kind of made it a goal to revisit our goal, so we failed at our goal.
We have not been doing that. Perfect.
We need to do that.
It's, I'm just trying to think of where the goals could be.
I, I can find that, don't.
Okay. Well, if people have goals that they would like to propose or eliminate. Do you have the goals with you?
I don't know, don't get excited.
I know I don't.
This is, I'm. I know we reviewed them some.
I'm a paper person, so.
Sometime last year.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, maybe just bringing it up so.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Maybe for the next meetings.
For sure.
You know, all this good thing and stuff.
Yeah, so I thought I had them somewhere. Um, yeah, so I think it is helpful to recirculate the goals from last year, if we can find them as a starting point. Again, we don't have to use any of those goals, um. At all, we can create entirely new goals or, you know, do whatever. You send them.
I think we, we had something in there about, um, getting presentations from the different.
Which we did accomplish.
Which we have accomplished, yes. And I think we wanted to hear from students at the high schools, which they have right now.
Yeah.
Those were some that I was thinking of. Did you say five of Jess?
There were some facilities-based goals.
I, I'll add them into the drive for next meeting.
Okay. Talk about next time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I'm thinking about goals, um, so that we can create our goals for the school year.
So, last year's will be in the drive.
I'm adding it right now.
Yeah. So, we can look at those and. See what needs.
Okay, next meeting. All right, uh, informational items audit update.
Oh, that's in the drive.
Sorry, you had that.
Sorry, so you added that.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to, so the audit update was given at the executive board for all of the districts. So, I just wanted to make sure that you, like, Deerfield got to see their own audit update, so that was in there. so I just wanted to make sure that you, like, Deerfield got to see their own audit update, so that was in there. Um, all of the field work, like, at the, all of the actual auditing is done and caught up. That's all done. The report writing that our auditors are doing currently is where they're still behind on. But we are, Amber put in there, when the expectation was, this was given to us by the auditing firm. They expect to have the FY twenty-two, twenty-three report to us by the end of September. It's currently under review. Uh, so that should be finalized by the end of September, and that'll be done twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we expect to have everything finalized no later than March, and then they're starting last year's, uh, or this year's audit from last year's numbers in November. So they're coming to do field work in November for FY twenty-four, twenty-five that just ended. So we'll be fully caught up by the end of this year with everything, including current numbers from last year.
Um, and I see that, so since we've been talking about this, that FY twenty-one, twenty-two, I think, has been completed?
Yes.
I, I've not seen it. Um, so wondering if we can get the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two posted on the SAU website.
Yep, I'll turn, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three is not, we haven't got the final report done yet or back yet from the auditors.
Okay.
So as soon as that comes back, I'll have them do that, but the twenty-one, twenty-two, I'll check with Amber, see.
Okay. Cause I think though, on the website, the most current audit is nineteen-twenty. I believe.
Oh, so we still need twenty-one posted as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty-eight, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay.
All right, okay, all right.
Can I?
Sure.
Just ask, like, so how did they get so far behind?
So I actually, I'm just.
No, no, that's a great question that I asked, just because I had another board ask me that same thing. And obviously, I wasn't here when that happened, but I did.
None of us were.
Yeah, I know. But I did, um, pose that question to our business administrator, so I asked her, her for that this morning. So I should have an answer very shortly around the actual reasons why that got behind in the beginning. I believe there's several reasons. I think COVID was a small part of it, but also, like, we, we own part of that, is like a, there was a lax of accountability at some point there that those audits weren't done. So, um.
Because in.
I don't know the actual reasons, though.
Because in this town report, each year, there's a letter that says, I thought it said that, you know, an audit had been done, isn't it? Or am I dreaming? You know, there's something, and that's always, yes, an audit has been done and it's signed off. So that's why, when all this came up, I was like, hmm, then how come in the town report?
Yeah, well, the town audit.
No, there's under the school too.
You're talking under the school section?
Oh. Like, if.
School report.
I mean, I'll look, I'll look up on an old school, you know.
I mean, I hope it didn't say that.
Well.
That might be a different kind of audit. It could be, and that's, I guess, from my understanding.
True.
I'll look that up. I'll go into an old, we go into an old town report. We can read it and see, but.
And I can look into that too.
I'm pretty sure there's something about the books have been looked at and.
Okay.
Yada, yada. So I kind of was like, this is in it every year.
Yeah, I can certainly look into that.
And I, I'll.
But I, and I did. We're currently working, I just asked her to do that this morning, so.
Right.
Well, in a sense, you know, you have checks and balances.
Correct.
Yeah.
Alex checking each year, just.
And.
Right. And it could just be, cause I know they close the books every year, so it, maybe it's just gone.
It's a bit of a DRI.
That. I don't know. I'll look at an old report as well and see.
Yeah, feel free to study for me too, and I can trust you what you're looking at, and then I can go get previous ones too.
Sure. Sure.
And, you know, this is. You guys have, one of your policies right now is policy D I E, which is in regards to policy or around, um, audits and the practice of that. So this kind of formalizes that you will annually have, that it will be a school board policy that you annually have the pol, or, um, an audit of your books every year. So that's, I mean, that's clearly.
But it. But that's.
Put a bow on it all.
Right, but that's part of being part of the SAU. The SAU takes care of that for us. It's not, we go out and find somebody to audit it. It's the SAU.
Just say it's books.
Yes.
Yes, I'm just saying, a policy, you guys having a policy kind of just ties that little accountability bow onto there is like, giving you kind of teeth to make sure that audits are being done and that.
I'm interested, yeah.
Not that Deerfield has to do their own audits. The SAU will absolutely be doing audits, but, um.
And, yeah, I imagine it's probably required by.
It is. It's definitely required.
Yeah. But.
Yeah.
Makes, not everyone has read all the education statutes, as it turns out.
There's. Thousands of pages.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I did want to add an additional item to informational items, so, Errol had emailed Jess and I about impact fees. Um, and I would love for you to come up and chat with us about them, because we will ultimately just make a decision on what we want to do about impact fees.
Um, I sent the email because the town, um, last March voted to spend twenty thousand dollars on an impact fee update. Now, uh, last impact fee update was in twenty thirteen, so we're twelve years behind. We're assessing impact fees on new construction at two thousand thirteen rates. And based on two thousand thirteen, um, proportional, uh, use, which is what impact fees are based on. Um, so the, the, the town voted to spend twenty thousand dollars on, uh, new, uh, studies, because every time you have a new impact fee, or every time you assess an impact fee or revise it, you have to actually have statistical, uh, study backup. People perform, you know, we have had ours on the town side done by Southern Hampshire Planning Commission historically, uh, but other people provide them. And, um, so the reason for my, my, uh, my inquiry was that we're having that done this year. Um, actually on the, uh, and it's a, it's a planning board function. So it's not a town, it's, it's, a planning board does things for the school and for the town, even though it's a town body. Um, so, um, historically, that's why I came in and asked last time if you, if you had a, you know, done the C I P, which apparently, and nobody reached out to you all. Um, but you can't, if you have, and you do currently have a two thousand thirteen base impact fee that you benefit from. Um, but you, you can't spend that money unless you have a C I P. Now, the town side, that's a bigger issue than it is, I think, here. But, I mean, cause I think, I believe you will do, you do the work, okay? But I didn't know if you were interested in having Southern Hampshire, or if you want somebody else to do an update, because your, your numbers are from two thousand thirteen. That's why I wrote the email. Um, they're just entering in on doing, uh, Southern Hampshire's. Uh, and full disclosure, I'm, I'm a commissioner to, uh, on, on the Southern Hampshire Planning Commission, so that's, I'm aware of it. I'm sort of working with Nate Miller, who's doing the work up there, uh, to, to get it done. Yeah.
So, so when you get the impact fees changed for the town, it's not, doesn't affect us? We have to get our own impact fees changed? I thought it was all one thing and then.
Well, town money and, and, and school money are two different things, so, so, you know. So the, the, you know, in theory, it's four thousand dollars to get your, 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 um, it's less than a change order. Uh, to get your impact fee. Um, but, um, yeah, it's, the, the, the school would, would fund, I believe, their impact fee work. Uh, the town department, the, the town only has two departments, believe it or not, currently assessing impact fees. One for the transfer station and one for the highways. Even the, the police and fire don't have their own impact fee. Parks and Rec don't have theirs.
The building.
Uh, government buildings don't have theirs. Um, and the library doesn't have an impact fee. So they get no money out of the, the development process that's, that's taking place in Deerfield. Uh, the, the nice thing about impact fees is, I mean, first of all, it sort of forces planning, cause you have to have a C I P in place. And I, my personal view is that the budget issues that, that the town is facing isn't really a budget issue, it's a planning issue. They haven't had, they haven't been forward-thinking about, you know, capital development or capital funding for a long time. They've been trying to do capital funding based on operational budgets. It's never gonna work, right? So, you, you can't pay for a six, a six-wheeler plow truck out of, out of operating monies, so. Uh, so the nice thing about impact fees is that all the money that's raised through impact fees segregated from every other town dollar, not in the general fund. They, they are accounted for separately. They're actually returned to the developer, whether that's the homeowner or the home builder or a private developer, with interest if they're not used. They can only be used on C I P, um, approved projects. So, uh, it, it just, it's nonsensical not to have impact fees. And when the new town administrator got here, she looked at our impact fees and said, you gotta be kidding. You can, you can at least double the money that is available to the town to, to, you know, to pay for things that need to be done. So that's why, on, on the planning board, we're, we're, we're pressing for that and getting, you know, people are putting in their, their, um, uh, their C I Ps and, uh, getting our impact fee study done to be ready for next, uh, building season. Um, Southern Hampshire is starting to work for the town and, um, will have the, the studies ready for probably February, just in time for next year. Um, so hence my, my email, it, sort of, to put it crassly, you want in, you know? It's gonna cost four thousand dollars to, to do that. Um, and I, my guess is the benefit's not gonna be, I, my, I think you're gonna get paid back pretty fast.
Who, who determines if, uh, the, the approved C I P projects?
So the, the, the process, uh, the, the process, um, on the C I P side, the, all the C I Ps go to the planning board. And the planning board ranks them and then puts them up to, um, the select board.
So we would need to have school projects.
I, I don't know how it's worked in the past.
Remember Rosa? We used to be, we used to be part of that. I know when I look at the last capital investment plan.
We collect your taxes, so.
Yeah, we had stuff in that.
And send them to your pay boy.
You guys have a C I P.
What?
There is a C I P. For Deerfield's school.
Okay, so, and so we haven't seen it. It hasn't come to the planning board. Um, but it'd be great if you could send it, so we can include it in the package. Um, my, my email wasn't about the, the C I P, but it was about a related one, which is the impact fees, which you wanna have.
I just wanted to know that part.
Yeah.
So the town is, the town is paying twenty thousand dollars for this, uh, this study.
For, actually, for.
To catch up from two thousand thirteen to present.
For five different studies, actually. Um, and, uh, so the five different departments can get impact fees assessed. Every time a C O is issued, the impact fee's gotta be paid. And, um, so, yeah, right now, we, as I say, there is a C I P for the school, an impact fee for the school. Uh, I don't know how much you collect, you know, you, you have that number?
Well, I don't have it. I can get it though.
I know it's hard, because it has to be something that we're fixing because of an increase in students.
Like the gym floor.
Yeah.
The gym floor, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all based on.
Gym bleachers, gym bleachers.
Yeah, I was looking at it earlier.
Proportional.
It has to be because of.
Yes.
Increase in population.
Yeah, not just wear and tear.
So how is that C I P taught to me? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have it digitized, so that, I'm gonna have it scanned, put into folders, so that way it's accessible to the board.
Yes, thank you.
So I will, I'll get that done.
And the good news, I, I mean, I, I believe the town administrator has actually simplified the, the C I, the C I P form um, into one page. So, I can, I don't know if you need that sent to you or.
That would be great. The one we have is two pages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's really simple. Definition of a capital asset is five, is, is a five-year useful life and ten thousand dollars in cost. And so, anything that is above that, that you wanna put in for, um, you know, you, you, and then typically, you put up a, uh, a trust fund, if it's a, it's a large item.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you, you fund it over time and then you, H V A C, I mean, that's exactly that kind of thing, right? You're putting money into that, uh, funded, uh.
So my understanding is the twenty thousand dollars for the five departments is you're asking for four thousand dollars from us to go towards that twenty thousand? Is that what you're?
No, it's, it'd be in addition to it, cause the, the twenty thousand was voted on the town side.
Town side.
And, and the school didn't have a, a warrant article on, for impact fees when they were doing it. Uh, so, you know, it's, so that's, that's the, you know, as I said earlier, if you wanna, wanna be part of that, or, I mean, I suspect the school could probably, uh, have their own study done with somebody else if they wanted to, but, I mean, Southern Hampshire's gonna be working on, on Deerfield. So, it makes sense, I guess, to do it, um, but, um.
And you need to know that tonight?
Um, ASAP, and not, you know, I asked Nate about when they're gonna send invoices out there. They'll send invoices out there. They just need to know what work they're, they're, if you wanna do it.
If it's going to work.
And there was a contract associated with it, and they would, you know, we'd send that to you. Enter into that.
What are, what are we, like, at the rates we're at right now? Does that, does that money get, you said it's every time a C O is issued?
Yep.
That money, okay. So, maybe if we could get some data of like what we have, what we, you know, what we got this year or something like that.
So.
It's been quite a bit of building.
Yes.
Um, yeah, a lot, a lot of development, not necessarily all that many C Os. But, um, so Jess, did you have your meeting with Karen Clement, or is that coming up?
I met with her last week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was this part of that conversation at all?
Not yet, because I didn't have our full C I P. So we're gonna be, we need to meet again.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
I think.
I was confused in that. So what is, what is that C O's standpoint?
Certificate of Occupancy.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, so every time, the, the way that RSA is written is, you, you can't, you can't certify without getting your impact fee collected.
But.
Yes.
I don't think it's the case that we get the money every year.
No.
The school.
Um, I don't know.
I feel like we have to apply. There was like a application process.
I think so too. You have to apply for it. It has to meet, like you said, it's gotta, it's gotta be something that it's because we have increased population. Like, why would HVAC be part of that? Why would that?
If you, um, so it's not good for, you can't use it for maintenance. Open, Parks and Rec is, is, is gonna do an impact fee, uh, have an impact fee study done. Um, and they can't include open fields, for instance.
Hmm.
Uh, can't be for maintenance. It has got, it's gotta be a capital, it's a capital improvement project funding mechanism. So it's gotta be a, 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 for instance. We had water in sewer and, and needed to increase our, uh, the size of our waste, uh, water, wastewater management plant.
If we had put in a new well?
If you'd had a, a new, uh, if you, yeah, uh, if it was based on, and it, what the study does is it, it establishes the proportionality of this, of the impact on the school of new development.
Hmm.
And then it funds legitimate, uh, pro, you know, proportional share to assets that the school is putting into place. Five years, ten thousand dollars created. So it's, it's, you know.
And if the school doesn't use it within a certain timeframe, it goes back.
It goes back to the development with interest.
So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what it is that we're receiving recently compared to.
I don't know what the school has received. I have no, I have no clue what the numbers are. I know on the, on the town side, when the, uh, new, um, town administrator got here, she looked at it and said, huh, you kidding? Five thousand dollars? At least ten. You know, and, and that was, and I haven't asked her for a breakdown of, of, of what the numbers are for, but it's, right now, it's, uh, my guess is you're, you're part of that five thousand dollars per, per house. That, uh, because the three that, that have been done are school, highway and transfer station. So each one of those, if they, I guess, I'm guessing that those departments apply for them, as you say, cause they do have to certify that they are for.
Right.
The correct, for, for, for the correct reason. And if the money, as I said, the money doesn't get spent over that period of time, if you don't have an active capital improvement plan that you're implementing, which this town hasn't been great at, okay? which this town hasn't been great at, okay, then those, that money will go back to the, you know.
Who, I think the most recent project that we've done, I mean, this all just predates this board, but was the gym floor in COVID times. We used, uh, impact fees for that, I believe.
Yeah, I'll get the numbers from the board just to make sure. And then, um, after I finish compiling all the CIP stuff together for our, I'm gonna meet with Karen again, so I'll reach out to her again to kinda go over that. And then happy to fill out whatever you need for CIP information.
For the, uh, planning board?
Yeah.
If I can get my planning board, the planner to return my phone call.
Yeah, happy to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I, this is all, when you go to the, the land use RSA, this is all, it's, you know, master plan is item number one. CIP is number two. And then, uh, the impact fee is a, it's, it's a lot later in the, in the statute, but it, it is what's called an innovative method of raising monies to meet those land use requirements in the statute. Any other questions?
No, does anyone wanna take action on this tonight or do we want more information before we decide to expend four thousand dollars?
Where would that four thousand come from?
Great question. That would be the TDD.
Right. I have no idea where you pulled that from right now, that would have funds set aside.
Yeah, I didn't know.
So I'll look.
I. I sort of doubt that there's a trust fund that we can pull from for that purpose.
So someone just said, said that it's, uh, it's 2,168 per CO of the school that Steve's currently.
Two thousand.
One hundred and sixty eight.
So half of, you know, very, by the proportion of, is it a portion?
Yeah, and I just, it just, you know, to give an idea, I think, what Harold said before, without knowing the numbers, that we probably could.
The 4,000.
Yeah, you, you could put one house. I mean, in theory.
But we really don't.
And, and, and the other thing is, right, and we, we were talking, not that it was relevant to the conservation issue, but the, the, the current use issue, uh, when LUCT, you know, the LUCT number tells you how many, uh, properties are, are being developed. Now, of those 13, um, LUCT charges this year, about half of them were, were actual, and I, I don't know anything, I don't know details, but I do know that about half those numbers were like $1,500, $2,000, something like that, small numbers. So it may have been improvements or, or, or something like that, that somebody added onto their, their, their property. But the others, the other half dozen were 10, 12, 15 bigger numbers. So, uh, there were about six or seven C, you know, LUCT. Now, the LUCT isn't, it's, it's sort of the, sort of the other end of the, the scale here. LUCT gets charged when you break ground. Okay, so when you, when you, when you start developing, I don't know if it's when you clear trees or when you actually, you know, put a shop, put an excavator to the ground to start building your house, but that's when the LUCT gets assessed. So all of those six or seven LUCTs, uh, in, in 2025 are probably going to, you know, be later COs. I don't know how soon, but, you know, they, they.
I thought it was when you went up changed ownership.
What's that?
I thought LUCT became.
It can be, I think.
When you changed ownership, I don't think it's, it's when you start, but.
Uh, well, it's, it's land.
It could have changed, this was a while ago.
Land use change tax. So every time the assessor, uh, takes, when you take it out of current use, it comes straight out of current use. And that's when it, that's when the assessor looks at it, it's when it comes out of current use.
Right.
So whether that's due to a change in ownership.
A lot.
Yeah, you, you hive off a lot, you, you're in this business, or you were, were in that business. They hive off a lot. If it's for a building lot and you can't put it into current use because of perpetuity or size, then you, you get assessed a land use change tax.
Right, because you don't have to, well, back then, you didn't have to break ground as long as the, the lot you cut away was not large enough to go into another current use.
Yeah, well, okay, that's, that's, and it, I mean, it's typically, most developers like to move pretty quickly. So, so when you, when you, when you subdivide, pretty much as soon as you can, you, you, you start digging. So maybe that was, I think there's, there's case law that, that I remember relating to when you start digging as opposed, so. I'm, I'm not gonna stand by that.
That's a lot. It's quite a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of land, you know, you know, case law in that. So, so it's when the idea of development starts materializing, I guess.
And the lot size no longer is in the current use.
Or, or qualifies for, for current use, yeah. And that's when it gets, so, so that's at the beginning of the process. The impact fee is at the end of the process, when you've done all that work and have built the house and you want the CO and whoever's done all that work's gotta pay, not the LUCT, whoever bought the land probably bought, paid the LUCT and is hoping to, you know, it recovers it from the price of, of the house.
And there was some LUCT, uh, issued after the new assessments, because they assessed land and saw that it wasn't currently meeting current use, right? I've seen this in the board of selection meetings.
Uh, yes, yes, indeed, yeah.
So if they survey your property and there's an RV parked on it, they're gonna take it out of current use.
Yeah, I was, if there's a, if there's a structure on otherwise qualifying, you know, 10 acres plus lot, they can, okay? And the definition of a structure comes, you know, whether it's an RV or, I mean, yeah, you can get into the weeds on that stuff, but.
Yes.
The whole idea is that LUCT is at the beginning of the, of the building process, impact fee is at the end of the building process and.
Got it. Okay, so does anyone wanna take action tonight or do we want to wait?
I feel like, um, if this is gonna be that good of a thing, probably wanting, wanting quickly.
I would probably agree. I do not know where the funds would come from. Do I think that we have $4,000 somewhere in our budget, seeing that we just had $600,000 over last year? I'm sure we could find 4,000, I just, I don't know where it would come from.
Essentially, what you're gonna do is you're gonna have to overexpend the line by 4,000 and then hope that you have revenue to offset that.
So I.
Or, yeah, not that new, but.
How much time is there?
Sign down, building renovation, site improvement, sign of trust, contract.
It depends, um, what the language of the trust was when it was set up. So we generally define what it can be used for when it's established. So we would, we generally rely on the trustee of the trust fund to tell us what the definition is. I mean, we have it somewhere also, but, um, yeah. So, but we don't have to decide that today, if it's coming out of a trust or if it's coming out of the budget.
We can just vote that we want to spend it and see if we can find a place in the budget to take it.
If we decide later in the year, if things are getting really tight, we could see if we could transfer it from a trust fund.
Either we have to still overexpend the line.
Correct, yeah.
Do we need to pick the line?
No, 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 we'll do that, yeah, yeah. Make sure it aligns with where it's supposed to go. Right. A line that makes somewhat, sorry, yeah. Um, all right, in the interest of moving this along, I'm, I'll make a motion to expend the $4,000 for the impact fee, um, study. Discussion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, any opposed?
Okay.
Right, on policies.
We can do this pretty quickly. So, um, I'm gonna, Nancy and I met just to kinda go over it. We were very good, we put meeting minutes.
I think that's the same here.
So, um.
For those on the next, yeah.
So for the third reading, we had, um, BEDG, which is the meeting minutes, and EHAG, use of generative artificial intelligence. And we felt that, given, we haven't heard any more comments, we've got anybody in the comments at the last meeting that we moved to, that we think that those should be adopted. So I, I guess I'll make a motion for that and we can have conversations. So I move that we approve BEDG and EHAG policies.
Second. Ellen and Kendra. Okay, discussion.
Good.
All in favor of approving BEDG and EHAG?
Aye.
Five. Five, zero.
And then the second reading, we had talked about possibly approving things on the second reading if there's really no big issue. And, uh, so we looked over their, their four on that one, BHE, which is school board use of people and other electronic communications. I think the only eye opener we talked about was you didn't realize that on social media, make sure you don't have.
Correct.
Yeah.
More than, more than three people.
Three people on that social media post, right.
A single chain, so it's probably.
It's really important to make sure you're not doing that. DIE, the audits, which Jess just talked about that. IKFG, career exploration readiness pathways and credentials, and KFD, use and location of automated external distributors. So we were fine with all of those, but we do have a caveat on one of them. And that's the career exploration readiness pathways and credentials. We just wanted to make sure that our approval is contingent on the removal of the high school language in our policy.
Right, only be kidding.
Right, and we also wanted, we just wanted to say that we strongly suggest that the DCS administration make sure that all the teachers at DCS are aware of the policy, because it really could affect their curriculum. Depending on the grade level, it's a little bit different, each one. So, um, given that, I, I'll move that we accept BHE, DIE, IKFG, and KFD with the contingent of the removal of the high school language.
Uh, well, second, Ellen and Kendra. Um, discussion about any of these policies. And this is to adopt them, not to move them to a third.
Right, to adopt them. Try and streamline it a little bit so we can get through more policies.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, and then, so it's five, zero. And then the last one is, uh, the recommendation to have the following policies withdrawn. And that's really because they're being replaced by a new policy or fully covered under different policies, which is what Nancy and I agreed with. So I will move that we, uh, with, withdraw policy BHD and policy EJDEA.
Right, I'll second. Ellen and Kendra, um, discussion. Okay, all in favor of withdrawing BHD and EGAEA?
Aye.
Five, oh.
You guys might make a good dent in your policies.
Yeah.
Oh, the new battery.
I was gonna say, so would you get the new ones?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got, next on the docket will come up for October.
Okay, and what we'll do is we'll wait until we have the discussion, because you've all read it from the first reading, and then we'll get together on the second reading if there's changes in the dip. It seems like it's okay, maybe we'll just look at it after the second reading.
And that sounds good for the third.
Great.
All right, I mean, yeah, obviously there might be one that are more complicated.
Yeah.
Right.
And those are continue on for sure.
But if we can move along, but.
Yes.
All right, public comments.
Can I make one?
Absolutely.
Sorry, just 'cause I'm sitting here taking a minute.
Trish, can you?
We have it all centered around. Just because I heard your conversation about looking at the elementary school budget and making cuts or trying to control the budget is what has brought me forward, plus some comments about high school and high school choice. There was a time where high school was separate from the elementary school budget. And so you felt as a taxpayer, you had a little bit more control over what was being presented to you regarding the high school budget, because that person on the board went to that high school and negotiated. Superintendent Bickford stated that this is what the town voted for as far as choice, so that must be what they want. I just wanna make the correction and it's, she wouldn't have this knowledge, but there was a warrant article, non-binding, where we voted as a town that we did not, we thought school choice was great as long as it didn't raise our taxes. That has not been the case. Um, the statement that Pembroke is cheapest, and Ellen, you're not the only one who has said this, our state rep has said this, so that's where our children should go. I have nothing against Pembroke Academy, my son graduated from there and, um, kudos to that school for putting up with my son. And his record still hasn't been broken on the cross-country team, so he wanted me to mention that. A great coach, great experience. But that may not be where people want their kids to go. In comments, and I've been wanting to address this, and Cannon, you brought it forward, because when I've gotten up and said we had this non-binding referendum about school choice, I've had others get up behind me and say, well, well, the contract that we have for Concord was good the first year, but then it went up. What I wanna say to all of you is, is as the only piece of our budget that we can control is what's happening in this building. You have no say as far as high school. High school can go up and up and up. And the only place that you're gonna find the way to alleviate anything to me as a taxpayer is what's happening at DCS. I have sat here for years in this building, I have seen positions cut, I have seen hours cut so that people don't qualify for health insurance. It hasn't helped my tax bill at all. So as I've said in prior meetings, this is a state issue, this is a federal government issue. As I listen to, uh, Jeanne Menard, can we not afford, kids are expensive, but can we not afford to invest in kids because they do pay and make what our country is in the future? So we have to question whether, you know, the expense is paid, if that is your job. So, Cannon, back to your point was, is that when it came to a vote, we were not presented a 10-year contract from Concord, a 10-year contract from Pembroke, a 10-year contract from Co-Brown, or a contract of school choice. It'd be, it'd be a ton of work. I sat here, I saw what the board members did. But high school is what is hurting the elementary school budget, we need to own it. But let's be careful what we take away from with our elementary school students, because what they experience here, they are going to take to those high schools. It is going to get them scholarships into college as far as the music and art is concerned. My sister-in-law worked for a company and all they hired was music majors, um, in a software company. I could go on and on, but it's late, you guys, y'all need to go. I'll say, thank you so much for your time and energy, it's not an easy job. Thank you.
Earl, roll the stretch three. I really just have a clarifying question. In the second set of policies that you, um, adopted, the first one was B, A, what?
BEDG.
BEDG.
No, that was the first, that was the first.
Are you chomping at the third? BH as in Harry E.
BHE.
You've got one second reading.
I meant on the second slew of, yeah.
Yeah, second slew is BHE.
The second slew, BHE.
Yeah, school board use of email and other electronic communications. Right, and that's replacing the EHD, which is.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that concept, I just didn't write it down fast enough.
Sure.
And I have to, I have to echo the, uh, the, the comment of the prior speaker. I'm, I mean, music is a language, ultimately. And, um, you know, we, we don't really teach languages as, as, as they did when I went to high school. Certainly in, as we did in the 19th century, where you had Latin and Greek and other languages that you studied. Reason you studied those languages was to learn how to think a different way than your basic way of thinking. And so I'm awfully glad that music is staying, because it helps you, it, it helps you think outside the box, right? It's very important, so don't go away with it.
Do you wanna argue that?
Yeah.
The music teacher behind you.
I understand that, I understand that, but that's.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Are you doing non-public?
We are.
I'll wait and get that too, thank you.
Okay, uh, no more public comments, so I'll make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to NHRS A91-A, colon, three, section two, subsection B and C. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
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 Michael, thank you for staying.
Michael, thank you for staying.
Of course.
Drive safe, there's no lights in the parking lot yet, so take care of that, don't fall on the trench.
Thank you, Hannah, everyone.
You too, Michael.